And welcome to today's Committee of the Whole meeting on Thursday, March 3rd. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Confirmation of agenda, is there any additions to the agenda this morning? Adam Clark?
Mr. Mayor, under staff reports, we would like to add a Taylor Road Bridge update. And add a number six, if we could, a closed session under section 239 to be identifiable. Information regarding identifiable individual, more specifically related to staff. And that's it for today.
Okay. Anything from council? Seeing none, any disclosure of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof, today's meeting? Seeing none in adoption of minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting February 24th, please?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Gardner, seconded by Councilor Lewis, that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole held on February 24th, 2022, of the Seventh Council of the Municipality of South Dundas be adopted as circulated.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all heard in motion, those in favor, opposed of any, motion carries. So we'll move on to staff reports, first one's the overview of 2022 recreational program. Melissa Austin, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This report is to provide council with an updated plan for recreation programming as we move towards the spring and summer sessions. As outlined in the report, the current plan for programming during the spring and summer sessions include programming for youth, adults, and seniors while also implementing camp opportunities, classes, and special events. Our plan with recreational programming is to build upon our previous fitness classes to offer programs, classes, camps, and events with a sense of community engagement, education, and active living for all patrons to enjoy. Staff would like council to note that additional programs currently being developed include water sports for beginners, outdoor education classes, pickleball for seniors, mom and tot classes, music lessons for seniors, and yoga for youth. Staff plan to promote all recreational programs through the municipal website and social media pages, as well as recreational community guide. If council has any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Thank you. You have a mayor?
I had a couple of questions, I'm just wondering, has there been given any thought to if we do something special event wise around a holiday? I love the fact that you're using like Dunbar and Matilda Hall, but have you thought about circulating it through the municipality and doing multiple spots and locations and times?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is our intention to have more locations and more special events throughout South Dundas. We're looking to increase our staffing capacity to support that.
Okay, so, but you've got to come, so the Easter egg hunt, who would do that?
So, through you, sorry. So I would run the program, I would supervise it, and I would also have program leaders help me run the program as well.
In April? Like you would get like what, like high school students or like when you say program leaders for the Easter, like we would hire something like?
The current program leaders that we have on staff.
Okay, so, okay, okay. Like students? Or the, like, when you, because in April, we don't have summer students yet, so who are, who are the program leaders?
The program leaders are the instructors that we hired earlier this year.
Oh, so we're going to use the kickboxing instructor to run the Easter egg hunt?
No, they're, they're hired specifically for camps and children's programs. We hired two instructors.
That's the after-school program kind of idea?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, the other thing is, last council meeting, or last Committee of the Whole, we talked about the rec guide and going out three times as opposed to two. When I'm looking at this, I don't really, this was one of the reasons why I wanted to see this, just a comment, I don't really see a three instances, I think this is more of a two, probably summer and fall. But, just a general comment, I'd like to see more programming. I've seen programming in other municipalities, participated and actually even run programming, and I just, I'd like to see it a little bit more fulsome, a little bit more regular, so you get the buy-in from the residents. And that's my concern about only having it in one location. You will have kids that would normally walk to programming, where their parents are busy on April 9th, and they won't be able to bring them out to Dunbar, so I think it's important to have a couple of locations, given our geographical distance between the village hamlets. I mean, it'd be easier if it was in a bigger urban environment, but we're not, so, one of, I'd like, I definitely want to see that. And I definitely, we, at some point, we've had art camps or art lessons on Saturdays, and I understand some of this is driven by the instructors that you get, but I'd also like to see if we're going to be utilizing staff, I definitely, I want to see a more robust programming. You mentioned about attracting families and keeping them here and that type of thing, and the only way that you'll ever have a robust programming is if people get excited about it, and then they participate, and then they will be returned customers, they have to have a good experience. I'd also suggest that anyone, any of the participants that sign up for these things, I would do a quick survey at the end of each one, just to get feedback, because that's the best way to learn where, what we've done right, and what we could improve on, so, just my comments, Mayor.
Councilor Lewis?
Well, so I see in the programs you have early on twice, is that two different programs or is it the same program?
That was just a typo in the report.
Okay. And these programs that we run, these are the same programs that we run every year?
On the, on the programming chart, there are additional programs that we have not run yet, but we intend to run in the spring and summer, they are new, some of them.
Because I got to side with the deputy mayor, I think that we should be running more programs, especially for the youth. And I think that's the only two questions that I had at this time.
Councilor Mellon?
Yeah, I mean, it's always nice to have more programs. I guess it's the logistics of whether, you know, we can get instructors or, you know, whatnot, and I do think we need to get some feedback and see what, you know, obviously, you know, some programs, you know, you might have one or two real key people, but we've got to have enough to make it work, so, you know, we can always have a survey, and Deputy Mayor Gardner sort of, you know, to get the feedback from the people, you know, what they might like to see, and what they might love, you know, what, what is being utilized, what isn't. I know, I did have one comment, the HIT program on, you moved it from Matilda Hall to out here in Morseburg on Thursdays. Not just going to cost me more money as my wife drives out here.
As a pecuniary interest, Councilor Mellon.
Sorry. But, I mean, that's, you know, I can see you're probably going to get more participation from having that program on Thursdays, move from Matilda, because it's at Matilda on, I believe, Monday, and then Wednesday in Iroquois, but the one thing I would like to see maybe is branch out a little bit, or maybe get some feedback from the different rec, whether it's, we don't really have a facility in Williamsburg unless we can do it in the parks in the summertime, in the summer months, or back in Brinstone Park, but we do have some back at Matilda, very little, if any, in Williamsburg, and, you know, it would be nice, I guess, to try and encompass some of the smaller towns out in the rural portion of the municipality, if there's enough, if there's enough interest in, you know, doing that, I can see the Thursday night, you know, moving it out here, just on logistics, apparently there's not a huge turnout at Matilda. The people out in the country, I mean, we're used to, you know, driving a distance, but then there's a driving distance, and then it's driving a little too far. So, maybe some feedback on, from a survey-type perspective, on what programs we could have, and maybe try and, you know, touch base with some of the user groups back, you know, Matilda Rec or Williamsburg Recreation, see if there's any programming we can offer through them, especially maybe through the summer in our parks, either Williamsburg or Matilda, or Brinstone, you know, if there's any, I don't know if you went down that road at all. Oh, yeah. Why did I just ramble for, I should have asked first. I'm good.
Okay, so I'm going to carry on with your ramble. So, have you met with the, some officials of the recreation groups like Williamsburg, Matilda, Riverside? Dunbar?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have built relationships actually through running the camp programs, some of their children have attended the camps, and I've met them through, through that, but I haven't officially set up like a sit-down meeting with them to kind of go over their recreation and how we can support that and how.
Well, I think that would be a good idea, because they, you know, they have a feel for their areas.
Definitely.
And what can happen. I wrote down Williamsburg, I know, Williamsburg's fairly central if you want to do a South Dundas event. I know all we have back there is the, is the, is the park, but during the summer and other times, it's there, and working with them would be a good idea, you know, I'm glad we're trying to do something Dunbar, I know it's a, it's a challenge maybe, but getting the word out and doing things is, is at least a good way of starting, and I do believe we need to at least talk to those rec groups, as much as they're not, they tend to be one or two people, they still, you know, except for Matilda, which is fairly strong. They may have ideas for their areas that we can incorporate into our programming. I'll be honest, I don't use the programming, but I do believe it's good for South Dundas to have in, in not only encouraging our children and youth to do things, it's, it's a good idea not only to see if we can get people involved in recreation, even if it's 10% of our population or 20, that's better than nothing, and it looks like we're, we're being part of their community, so.
I agree.
I think in the end, though, you're going to get in some feedback from, from all, you know, it's one thing to put something and put it out there, and even if it's a great event, you got to get the feedback, say, okay, what's right, what's wrong, okay, do better, what more can we add? And I know that the recreation master plan is going to add a lot to that, we're not there yet, and I think that's going to help not only council, it'll help you and Austin figuring out where, where we need to go in the, in the short-term and long-term future, but other than that, you know, do the best you can, but feedback's very, very important and, because, yeah, numbers can give you a sense, but sometimes somebody will say, well, if you had done this a little different, I would have been in that, or something like that, so, can't please everybody, trust me, you cannot please everybody, so you kind of get that consensus and make it work. Anything further?
Yeah, just a little bit about the consistency, so, absolutely agree with the mayor with the feedback, you know, I have a nine-year-old daughter, so she's been enrolled in various programs, and I can tell you that when they tank out, and the frustration of the parent is, if the instructor doesn't show, if it's canceled because of weather, and nobody calls anybody, if it's not a good value for the money, because generally speaking, even at nine, if Reagan goes to a program, I'm waiting there for an hour and a bit with her, right? So it has to have value, and it has to be well-organized, and it's not always about number of staff running the program, it's actually about the follow-through of what the kids are doing, how it's getting engaged, and I really would encourage that you talk to the groups in Riverside and stuff, and if the volunteers are not parents, then ask for folks that you can connect with, because the kids, the kids are looking for it, and the kids in Morseburg and Iroquois who maybe aren't going to go on the splashy summer vacation or whatever, the summer camp can make a huge impact in their life. And, you know, I, the one thing as a parent that I absolutely hate with children's programming is coloring sheets. If I ever show up anywhere and they've just handed out crayons and color sheets, even though my daughter loves color, I'm going to lose it. So, just, you know, it has to be well-thought-out, and it doesn't have to cost a lot, it just has, I mean, you know, back in the day when I did kids' programming, there wasn't YouTube, there's YouTube now, you can do tie-dye shirts, and you can do a million things, so, I just, I'd like to get serious about this, and I'd like to have some quality, and I'd like to have some difference than what we've done in the past, so, those are my final comments.
I would just like to note that I do ask my program instructors to submit a lesson plan prior to the courses, and then I do review them.
Do you go to the?
To ensure that they?
Yeah, do you go to the programming to see what, because, I mean, if somebody has the personality of a wet noodle, it's not going to fly with kids, so.
I do attend the programs and supervise them directly until I feel the staff are at a point where they can work alone.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Councilor Lewis?
No, I have to agree with, with you, Mayor, and the deputy mayor on feedback. Feedback is a key thing, it don't make what it's about. The more feedback you get, the better it is, and I, I know whenever I was in recreation and there was programs running, one or two in a program, that's not a program, you know, and I, so I hope you listen to the feedback and, and give the youth, or the seniors, or the adults, what they're asking for, like, don't go out of the realm, but they know, they know what they like and what they don't like.
Of course.
Thank you.
Councilor Mellon?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the positive feedback you get, like, I mean, I can see when you're, you know, when you have one or two or three people at a program, maybe to start it with, but the positive, the positive, if the programs run right, word of mouth will spread between the adults and the children, and they'll bring, you know, come out, more so than, you know, reading our, our program guides and stuff. That, I think, is a big thing. I mean, we kept a lot of the programs going, I only can speak on what I know of, is that HIT program, they were doing it online, it kept, you know, them active and interested, because once, you know, especially going through the pandemic, you know, people drop off and they don't come back in, you know, and they, oh, you know, I don't want to go out on a, you know, a Monday or a Wednesday night, because it's, you know, anyway, the only other thing, and it, light bulb went off when you mentioned Dunbar, Mayor Bybell's about back there, whether or not that would even be logistically possible, if we would, you know, do a partnership, because Dunbar, let's face it, is pretty darn close to the boundary. With North Dundas, we do have a conversation with them, if they have some kind of programming back there, and maybe between the north and south Dundas, we could use the Dunbar Hall, which is, you know, really quite central located to north Dundas and pick up that area, like, I mean, whether or not we want to, you know, just reach out and see if they have any programming, and maybe we could do a, you know, and it doesn't matter, let's face it, you know, you might have more from north Dundas or south Dundas, but, you know, it provides, you know, maybe a one or two nights back there that you could pick up, you know, fitness and health doesn't end and stop at the south and north Dundas boundaries, so maybe that's something we can explore.
Okay, well, I agree with Councilor Mellon on that, like, people who live in Dunbar don't associate with Morseburg, they associate with Chesterville. So if there's something going on in Chesterville, they're going to drive to Chesterville, so maybe you need to see what's going on in north Dundas, and then see what's going on in south Mountain, and I don't know if any, like, south Mountain does have some recs up there, but I don't know, sure, not sure if they do, but there'd be the two locations in north Dundas that we could partner with them, and I know from the past, their rec program is fairly strong, and they've done really well, and if there's something there that we could either partner with them or work with them on, I think that's opportunities we have to look at as, as two joint municipalities, when it comes to the county side of things. The camp programs, like, if you, if you, if you circle them around, I think that's a good idea. The other thing I will mention before I quit rambling is that I like the use of the arena floor, like, that's just an opportunity that just sitting there begging to happen, and ball hockey with youth and children, and even, even adults, if they want to go into that kind of stuff, and if somebody wants to come down and do a ball hockey league, it's all there, so, we got to see if we can encourage that kind of recreation when, when we do have that facility sitting there anyway all, all summer, it's not, doesn't have to make money, it doesn't cost a ton of money like it does during the winter, but certainly, you know, utilizing a space as large as that is a good idea. Just refresh my mind, do we have skating programs on now? Do we have free skates, stuff like that, going on now?
We, we do have drop-in public skating, which is free, and the parent and tot, and the senior skating as well.
Okay, I'm not a skater, so I don't look for it, but I do know that they can, you know, fill in the arena with people just skating, now that we can do that again is something that, as much as it's only a month left, was always enjoyable when I think the youth had the opportunity, so. Anything else from anybody from council? Go ahead.
Just for direction from council, we talked at last meeting about the recreation guide being twice or three times a year, is the direction of council twice, summer, fall, or does council want to look at another option?
Okay, what, staff had their choice right now, two or three?
If I had to choose, I'd choose three.
Okay.
Two.
You're getting two.
All right.
I asked, at least you had the opportunity, you didn't convince us, so.
It was better than not.
It's true.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
So moving on to the Iroquois Municipal Campground Operations Plan, Austin?
Change chairs here.
Yeah, wherever you are.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. In front of you this morning is a five-year operations plan for the Iroquois Municipal Campground. As the 2022 budget deliberations sparked a conversation around the operations of the campground, staff have reassessed the plan for council's consideration moving forward. Getting started, the Iroquois Municipal Campground Operations Plan covers all operating components of the campground, as well as highlights a marketing strategy, target markets, staffing structure, a five-year capital plan, as well as a fee structure. As the city of Ottawa is expanding south and a new housing development is being constructed, along with increased tourism and the completion of our 10-year master plan, 2022 presents an excellent opportunity for the municipality to improve its parks and recreation to aid in attracting young families, businesses, health professionals, and tourists to South Dundas. Brief introduction, the Iroquois Municipal Campground is located in Iroquois and currently offers sites for both transient and seasonal campers, as well as electrical and water, water services, a dumping station, community washrooms and showers, a hall, and a kitchen, as well as a laundry and picnic area. As council is aware, the campground offers a scenic view of the St. Lawrence River and is located next to the historic Carmen House and Forward House. As we look forward to the future, the campground was a key feature in the Iroquois Waterfront Development Plan, and has a plan highlighted future goals of expanding and improving the campground services, promoting the campground through online advertising and tourism magazines for Eastern Ontario, and enhancing online information regarding the campground and its link to local businesses and events within South Dundas. To plan for the future, this operations plan outlines a one, three, and five-year capital plan, which also is reflective of the current status, future goals of council and staff, as well as the pre-existing goals of the, contained within the Iroquois Waterfront Development Plan. Staff recognize that marketing and advertising are a critical component to any successful operation within parks and recreation field. With that being said, staff plan to promote the Iroquois Municipal Campground not only for its services and what it offers, but also what Iroquois has to offer as a whole. Within two kilometers of the campground, Iroquois offers multiple recreation attractions, such as the Gallup Canal Marina, two boat launches, Iroquois Golf Course, Iroquois Beach, Seaway Locks, the Point Recreational Area, lawn bowling, tennis courts, soccer fields, the Iroquois Mall, and a new gas station with the Tim Hortons. All of these amenities are within a small area and, and are important to the promotion of all, all of the amenities within the village of Iroquois. Taken into consideration the peak hours and high-traffic days, such as Fridays and Saturdays for camping, as well as the current staffing levels at the Iroquois Municipal Campground, the hours of operation will be Monday from 11:30 to 6:00, Tuesday 11:30 to 6:00, Wednesday 11:30 to 6:00, Thursday 11:30 to 6:00, Friday 10:30 to 7:00, Saturday 11:30 to 7:00, and Sunday 9:00 to 4:30. In addition, based on staff's experience over the last three years, it is planned that the staffing structure at the campground will consist of a recreation and leisure, leisure supervisor, as well as three students. All staff will rotate between the Gallup Canal Marina and Iroquois Municipal Campground. Staff would like council to note that although the hours of operation begin at 11:30 for the campground, the supervisor will be available at the Gallup Canal Marina between the hours of 8:30 and 11:00 to assist any campers as required, and their phone number will be posted at multiple locations around the campground. The supervisor will be scheduled from Tuesday to Saturday from 8:30 to 4:00, which will allow for proper supervision and adult presence during the high-traffic days at both facilities, with the students rotating between, be on a rotating schedule, sorry, which will provide students with their 35 hours a week, as well as one full weekend off every three weeks throughout the duration of their contract. When we look at the organizational software, the Iroquois Municipal Campground is similar to all other recommendities in the past, where all bookings were recorded through an Excel spreadsheet or pen-and-paper method. In 2022, an online booking system will be implemented, which will allow campers to reserve a site and pay online, and also allow staff to access and process bookings from anywhere. The organizational software becomes an important factor when we consider our target market. In staff's experience, seasonal campers are the campground's main source of revenue. In addition, transient campers are as equally important to the success of the campground as we typically see, an average of eight to 10 groups per year booking 10 sites or more at a time. And that booking is usually up to one full week. As we get into the financials, staff have provided council with a brief forecast of a five-year budget, as well as comparables to surrounding campsites, which outlines daily and weekly rates. Although staff didn't hear back from a few campsites regarding their seasonal rates, it does appear that we are in the appropriate proximity of the average daily and weekly fees. In addition, staff have presented council with the forecast of fees over the next five years, which were previously approved in 2020 and illustrated 2% annual increase. If council wishes to discuss a different percentage of increase each year, staff have the seasonal rate of a 5%, 10%, or 15% increase available for council's consideration. Skipping ahead, the immediate improvements for implementation include the overall organization and presentation of the campground. Obviously, the implementation of an online booking system and the reintroduction of an onsite supervisor will drastically improve the overall organization of the Iroquois Municipal Campground, while minor details such as landscaping and signage will improve the presentation of the campground. The campground currently offers 30-amp services, as well as 15-amp service, water, sewage dumping, community washrooms and showers, accessible bathrooms, a rec room, kitchen, and access to the municipal sports lending library. In regards to sites, the municipal campground is home to 70 sites, which includes 66 30-amp sites and four 15-amp sites. Looking at the five-year capital plan for the Iroquois Campground, staff ask council to keep in mind that whichever direction you may choose to go on the fee structure, capital opportunities can be expanded upon accordingly. In year one, we see the improvement of the organization and presentation of the campground, as well as the development of a weekend entertainment schedule and the installation of an information board. Year three sees the expansion of three to five 50-amp sites, and updated tour service along the lawn bowling and tennis court area, as well as tree planting, and year five outlines the initiation of upgrades for existing sites and the continuation of tree planting. Staff would like council to note that, in regards to tree planting, almost all the trees at the Iroquois Campground right now are going to need to be completely removed within the next three to five years. And if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, also a fast ramble. Just going through, or, kind of restarting my stuff here, so, anyway, staffing structure. I know that you have a good personal experience at the campground, Austin, but... I know that you have a good personal experience at the campground, Austin, but here's my challenge, and, and I kind of compare it to when I used to have a dairy operation, which is 24/7/365, doesn't matter what day of the week it was. And our council member can relate to this too, it's, um, to me, a 35-hour-a-week supervisor isn't enough. I'm not sure who works 35 hours a week if it's a real job anymore. No disrespect to anybody here, but that, we could figure out more hours there. I think, not only myself, but more of council had concerns about operational, like if something goes wrong. We all know that you're, you're dealing with seasonal campers, and when people, and I'm assuming they're pretty close to what I would think is stereotypical, if I'm paying the bill, I expect service. And I don't care what time of day it is, if something goes wrong that the municipality has to look after, I need a phone number. Mayor doesn't want to call, I'm going to tell you that right now, I don't think that's right. So somehow you have to operate it that, you know, you, you have your students that do the menial tasks during the week, that's fair. But that supervisor has, is the key role to both the campground and the marina and how they function. And, and, you know, I look at it and I say, well, they have to have time off, I'm not disagreeing with that totally. But it's one of those, you know, it's only a short season, you know, you're running from, I don't know, I'd say what, middle of May, when do we start?
Uh, May, May-long weekend.
Okay, so I'm not too far off, and then they have to be out by October, but I'd say probably middle of September or most of, kind of wandered off. So you've got this short season that you have to do a lot of work in. So I do have concerns about hours, I'll, I'll let it flip around the room and, and see where it goes from there, but that, that would be one of my concerns when I look at it and how you're going to make sure that those, and I know there's been discussion, well, we can leave one of the campers in charge. I hesitate at doing that, because that gives them, no disrespect to anybody there, but it gives them ownership. Do not want to go down that road. I don't, it's our campground, and then all of a sudden, you know, they get ideas, well, we're going to run it our way. Well, we don't mind working with them and coming up with ideas of how we can make that work better, because they are our customers and, you know, I'm saying the customer is always right, but I would say three-quarters of the time, the customer has good ideas that can be incorporated into how we need to work things out. So that's my comments on staff. I have more comments on the budget, but I want to get past this one first, because this implicates the budget, because it's part of how we go. Um, I don't mind charging more, everything has gone up. However, I also understand that there's a limit to up, that, uh, and I've been part of a council that done the big up, and the big up causes a full chambers back there. And, and that's okay, we can, we'll make that happen. We relented at that time, but so, I always say little ups is better than big ups all at once, because the big ups get people in arms. Now, we've gone through a session here of, of, of the economy having big ups, so people have gotten used to big ups, but we have to explain why the big ups make sense for us too, so. So anyway, we'll, we'll figure out the staffing thing first, and then we'll figure out how that works out with the budget. I don't know where you're going to go with marketing, I don't, how much, a lot of it's word, word-of-mouth marketing here. We don't need to be fancy-dancy with marketing, that's for sure, but if there's places that make sense, we can use it. If there's not places that don't make any sense, then we shouldn't use it, so. That's my start. Jeff, Mayor?
Do you want us to only cover the staffing?
We'll start on that, and then we'll, or what, if there's other things, but the budget, we'll, we'll whack at that last, because
Okay.
what we discussed will, will may implicate what we're going to do with budget.
Okay.
Because that was my big concern at budget time, was budget, and where we're going to go. And you heard my concerns at that time, but let's work through the staff model first, because I think that's what others had concerns about, and, and if you disagree with us, show us why, if your model works versus our thinking. Because as I said, you've been there, so I respect that. However, you also know how needy those people can be at times, no disrespect. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll be honest with you, Austin, this whole presentation frustrates me. Um, and I hate being put in this position, but I have a lot of questions. Um, I will try to start on, on the ones that, um, pertain specifically to budget. The supervisor being gone at four on a weekday, uh, or a weekend, uh, is somewhat ridiculous. Um, you've only got staff there till seven on the heat of the July summer night at both the campground and, um, the marina. Uh, and that's going to cut into, uh, gas revenue, slip revenue, campsite revenue. And I, I just, I, I, if you can explain the thought process behind this seven o'clock time. Um, and I get it, P, you know, you want to hire staff and they want to have summer, so it's, it's nice to dangle the carrot in front of them and say, well, you only ever have to work till seven. Um, but if what's in your, it, that suggestion does not match growing a campsite. So we have to figure out if we're either going to do an all-seasonal campsite, which would be my suggestion, or this transient campsite, which is completely different. So if I can get an explanation on that, and then my second question is going to be if you've done a return on investment for if we turned it into just a seasonal campsite. So what campgrounds do is they will have every number of their campsite, uh, say campsite, campsite number five, right? They know how much that, that particular site makes them. That's how a business is run. So when we're looking at an operational plan, that's kind of what I was looking for, where you, every single campsite, you know what, uh, it makes. And generally speaking, if you have a poor-performing campsite, they, uh, they will turn that into a seasonal site, because then it's guaranteed income for the area. So if you can kind of explain this seven o'clock thing, because if we're going to compare pricing, I will tell you, generally speaking, there's staff till at least 11 o'clock on a Friday night, everybody, everywhere else. Um, so if you can answer that, then I have a couple of other comments.
Yeah, absolutely. So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, with the current staffing levels of three students and one supervisor in their hours per week, and then going back and forth, that schedule was what worked out, uh, and taking into consideration of keeping the marina open a little later than we had last year, just to offer that later fuel service. Um, and then as far as, uh, the supervisor only working until four, uh, the reason for that was the supervisor will be starting at 8:30 to cover that gap before the students come in. Uh, given the hours that the students will be working with the number of students we have, that was, the gap was, uh, evident in the schedule to keep the marina and campground open until even seven or six o'clock in the evening. Um, so the supervisor will come in early and cover the marina for any fuel sales, but also be available for campers for a few hours in the morning if anything's urgent.
So when do the washrooms get cleaned at the campground?
The washrooms get cleaned when the students come in. So the students, the students and the supervisor both have a daily duty sheet. Uh, the students sign off on the sheet every day, they initial it, sign off on it, and it's collected every week by myself. Um, and I also will be communicating with the supervisor on a daily basis, as well as fielding any campground complaints or marina complaints regarding washrooms or any other services.
Well, the reason why I ask that is if you have the staff around later, um, if they clean the washroom at night, later at night, number one, uh, people aren't using it as much, so you're able to do it more efficiently. And number two, it's then cleaned for, for first thing in the morning. So, um, there are ways around. I'm, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not absolutely convinced that you can't make it work really well with the staff that you have. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced of that at all. I, I, I'll be brutally honest there, because it's going to take some creativity, it might take, uh, split shift, uh, two days a week for students, I don't know if you've looked into that. Um, there's, there's different ways to do it, there's like compression of a, of a work week, there's, there's having, even the supervisor, having, doing split shifts on a Friday and a Saturday, uh, should kind of be the norm, to be honest with you, where they start their day with their staff and get them going, and then they're there around five or six or after supper to deal with any last-minute, um, arrivals and any issues. Because if you're going to build this, where it is, um, able to get money financially, um, and people want to camp there with the advertising that you suggested, you're not only going to attract the people that go to bed at six o'clock at night, you're going to, you're going to attract large groups, right? So on that, if, if I say I was planning a 60th birthday party, and I wanted to rent out the kitchen, because you've mentioned that we, with the new building, we have, uh, the community hall and the kitchen, how much does that cost?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, the kitchen, to rent the kitchen is free of cost, uh, as, at this point. Uh, last year, we didn't have any kitchen rentals. Um, obviously with the building just opening and the rec area not being open last year due to COVID, uh, we didn't have the kitchen open, but this year, it, it's estimated that we will have interest in using the kitchen.
Okay, so do, we don't have a rental, like you don't have a, you're just going to, so there's, there's no rental agreement? There's no, uh, expectations, there's no cost associated, like, because we're in, this is supposed to be an operational plan, and we've got this beautiful kitchen, and we're just giving it, and how are you going to control that with the seasonal campers that are used to using that building?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have a sign-up for the kitchen, as well as the rec area. Uh, if any groups wish to rent the rec room or the kitchen specifically, then we do have a, a sign-up sheet, uh, or a request form for that.
Do you have to be a seasonal camper to do that?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, it was planned that you would have to be a seasonal camper or a camper to rent that, uh, kitchen specifically. Um, obviously with other recreation groups, such as the airport group and lawn bowling also utilizing it, uh, staff felt that that may be appropriate for year one of renting the kitchen.
Okay, because I mean, I, the benefits I see with the Iroquois Campground is actually, uh, group camping is hard to get anywhere else, and it can be fairly expensive. So if you have a group of friends or family that want to have a nice little gathering on a weekend, that to me would be a target market that we would, because they're not looking for, um, Algonquin Park-type stuff, they don't care if they're on the waterfront or not, so that would be the type. But I don't know how you're going to mitigate, to the mayor's point about ownership, how you're going to mitigate letting outsider transient campers for the weekend use that building. It's, that's going to be a tough back and forth, um, and, you know, it's going to, it, but it's the only way that I think that that campground could be a vital space of rental, so. There's questions around that, let's just say. Um, when I looked at your financials, and, and I'm assuming you guys use Moneris? Do you use Moneris for the, okay, so it was around, it was close to $5,000 a year for that? Um, I don't know if you've looked into other ways, people are leaving Moneris, I think it's four, maybe I'm wrong, was it three, three grand or something like that? It was a couple of thousand bucks. Correct me if I'm wrong, I can pull it up. I see everyone looking. Five hundred?
Two thousand five hundred.
Two thousand five hundred, okay. So, um, when I'm looking at the operational thing, some suggestions about efficient, like around efficiencies, one of the frustrations was the report feels very same-as, same-as. Like it's, it's, it's very similar to, um, the other reports that have been approached to this. There's not a lot of thinking outside the box, it's, it's status quo, um, and, and that's not going to get us where we need to go. It, it, there's, there's absolutely no way. And if we're going to compare prices per night to other campgrounds, um, I've said this multiple times, and I don't mean to bash the Iroquois Campground, but those transient campers that you're looking for that are going to come for the weekend with their family, there's not enough amenities there, there's, there's just not. So we have to look, and I really would like to see, I don't know if you did that, but the seasonal, if you turn that entire site into a seasonal campground, so strictly seasonals, and I would even suggest that if we have residents of South Dundas, they receive a percentage off, like give them a, give them a bit of a discount, because, you know, camping for seasonals is like having a cottage. If you can't spend, you know, $700,000 on a cottage, you tend to get a camper and, and do it like that. So there's ways, so I don't know if you've ever done the ROI on that, to see what it would look like if that entire campground was a seasonal site.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, we haven't done, uh, ROI to see if it's specifically only for seasonals.
Okay, so, I mean, when I look at operationals, you need to compare those numbers, because if you get seasonals in, your advertising is zero, because you've already attained the customer. You have to look at what price it is to, for a transient camper, you're talking about a lot of advertising, what's the price that getting that body into the campsite is going to cost you? You have to have that actual breakdown per individual camper, per night, to see if your advertising dollars are, uh, being spent properly. So that is operational, okay? Um, and, and whether or not, it's, it's one of the reasons why some campsites get into wood, uh, marshmallows, that type of thing, because there's heavy markup on some of that stuff, and it, it's whatever. I'm not saying you need to get into that, I'm just saying, um, in the real game of camping, which I don't see the Iroquois campsite as, uh, there's all these considerations that come into play. And I'm still absolutely convinced that turning it into an all-seasonal campsite, uh, is the way to go, and having the, uh, customer dedicated to the upgrades and having them pay for it over time, so it's not the taxpayer that pays for it. Um, the other question I have, I don't know if you want me to stop, or can I continue with some of my other questions?
Little break.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right, I'm not going to cut you off later. Go ahead.
I have to agree with the, the mayor on the 35-hour supervisor. Since it's such a short period of the year, I think those hours should be increased to at least, uh, a 40-hour-a-week myself. And I'm not saying that it has to work the eight, nine hours straight, maybe, um, a split shift, so many hours in the morning, so many hours in the afternoon. I don't think, uh, the six o'clock at night is feasible for us, South Dundas, because, uh, as you know, I, I still listen to the campers. And they, and the word is that they have, uh, people come in after hours, set up their little tent or their camper, then leave before anybody gets there in the morning. So they get a free overnight lodging. So I think what we have to do is we have to reconfigure the hours that the student works. And then, as I told you be, before, Austin, I like to have that phone number up there in case something happens, because I know whenever I was in, in, uh, the biz, I'd get a phone call eight, nine o'clock at night, because a breaker went, and they couldn't go over and to the panel box and turn the breaker on. When was the last time our rates went up?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, they went up 2% last year.
2%.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm looking at the, uh, the chart here, and, uh, it's not quite the same realm. Almost everybody else is between $51 and $55 a night. $42 the difference between the weekly rate between us and campsite up the road. I just don't know if a 2% increase is, is feasible, uh, for us, you know? But that's, that'll be your decision. And when it comes to the kitchen, I don't mind if the campers use the kitchen free, but, you know, there's our utensils, there's our silver fridge, uh, cleanup, power, and we should be at least getting something back for the, the use of, of all our electricity and our equipment. So myself, I would like to see at least a small fee on that. I'm not saying outrageous, but as long as we can recover the wear and tear of our stuff, and to pay for a bit of the hydro, I'd be happy with that. I just, I don't know, I think those freebie days are just about a thing of the past. And I think that's just about all my comments on, on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Another, another camper, that's good. Another camper, that's good.
Yeah, um I uh the I'm just gonna go down the um staffing, not enough. As far as I'm concerned, we should have um one, if you wanna call him or her a supervisor and two students uh per campsite and per marina, that'll be reflected in the budget, as you've already said, we don't, that's not enough, sorry. Uh I've heard last year there was got people went there and they they camped or campground for nothing because there was nobody there to take their money, their money. It was during the Apple Fest. Uh and actually it was approached over at the Apple Fest, you know, who do you pay your money to, there's nobody at the campsite, that's ridiculous. Could somebody please explain to me that student schedule Monday through Sunday? Because I look at that and C, three, M, one, off, two. I I I don't even know what that is supposed to mean, what is like the student schedule Monday 11:30 to six? What is, how how do you interpret that is supposed to be, how many are supposed to be at the campsite?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the C is for the campground, the M is for the marina, and the the students' positions are labeled one, two, and three, so student number one will be at campground, two at the marina, and then three would be off that day. And they cycle through, it's a three week rotation for their schedule.
I thought I didn't know what I was looking at. The supervisor doesn't need to be there at 8:30 in the morning. If I go to a campground, you can fire a cannon to the campground at 8:30 in the morning. Uh Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you need somebody there, Deputy Mayor Gardner said, yeah, 11. I think you need somebody there to patrol at 11, some campgrounds even have security that occasionally goes through, they hire somebody, you know, we can use the OPP, but I don't think we need to. Uh we need somebody there, especially Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I've been at campsites and you see people coming in at eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night if they're coming from any distance. Uh so we need somebody there till June, July, and August, probably till nine o'clock. Uh just because of work schedules, people can't get there, you know, seven o'clock, if you rent a campsite out and say you gotta be here by seven o'clock, they'll say, well, no. Uh so and at 8:30 in the morning, uh I would bring the students in at 8:30 in the morning, maybe do some of their cleaning, um whatever, you know, at that time. But a supervisor does not need to be there at 8:30 in the morning, they should have their work schedule, what they need, what you know, what they're doing at whatever. Uh we need more staff, like I've already said that. And especially through the summer months, we need somebody there and you know, till I would, at least nine o'clock. Deputy Mayor Gardner, you're like, and I've seen it to 11, but you know, um yeah, realistically, and I think, you know, our problem is it's a small campground with a small number of sites and the majority of it is seasonal. Maybe, you know, and that's where our bread and butter is, the transient, you know, renting the weekends and whatnot. Um we're not gonna, so we need to have somebody there uh later in the day, have the students come in at 8:30 and work and have a, you know, rotate it through. But my, if we're just gonna go down staffing, we need more for the campground and the marina, which we're gonna get to, which will reflect in the budget and how much we're charging. You know, that to me, that's the only way to do it if you're, you know, the kitchen, well, I don't know, I'll I'll just stop if we're just gonna do the staffing. That's my uh opinion of how the supervisor and the student schedule should work. You know, nobody's gonna be calling at 8:30 in the morning to book a campsite, especially if we get our um camp, our booking do hickey thing up and running. You know, so, you know, students at 8:30 and we need to have a contact number like Donnie said, like Council Lewis said, you know, we need to have, because I've been at camp sites and blow a breaker at, you know, nine, 10 o'clock at night and and hopefully the fuse box is locked, so you know, people can't get into them. Uh I've seen some places where they're not and it's not a really good idea to turn somebody's power off at 11 o'clock at night, I only did it once, so. But uh you know, so we need somebody there to have, you know, if the breaker pops, you know, and somebody needs power and uh but yeah, we need to have that contact number up there clearly, you know, spelled out and that's as far as I'm gonna go as far as staffing. And I got other things that we can get into later if you wanted to deal with staffing now.
Okay. So you've heard from two people that do camping, I don't do camping and you know, perhaps we need to to shift things around to have students come in early, supervisor late. I don't think we need two supervisors, but we need a real good, we need a special person to run both, 40 hours at least, but willing to do the extra legwork when it has to happen. Finding good students is always a challenge these days too, but hopefully we can, but um you've heard about the holes, what's your thoughts?
Uh so through you, Mr. Mayor, as far as the after hours, we uh in recent years, we definitely had the after hours number posted. Uh whoever's on call for the Parks and Recreation Department does respond to after hours calls for that. Uh two years ago, the supervisor was available for after hours as well. Um so if there was any emergency, the camper and boaters all had the phone number and they were able to call the supervisor and come deal with any issues after hours and that that is the plan for 2022, uh that the after hours number will be posted as well as the supervisor's number for any after hours emergency. Uh in regards to the schedule, we can definitely look at shifting things around to make sure uh there's an adult presence there later in the evening as well as uh maybe getting some cleaning done at first thing in the morning as well as last thing at in the evening uh also.
Okay. Further on staffing?
Yeah, actually, staffing specific, students working till October. You've got that in your your thing. Can't see where I found it, but I I when I picked it up, I was kinda like, I the students, you're you're airing for college and university students, correct?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, uh we are airing for college and university students. However, it does have that in there until October, because if any students are available, in recent years, we did notice that come September, when the students go back to school, then we're left empty handed at the campground and marina. Uh so if any student isn't home and available, the the contract is able to extend all the way till the end of the camp camping and boating season.
And I had heard uh last year that there was a huge accommodation made for uh the summer students that want to take vacation time. Um and that's one of the reasons why I'm not convinced you can't do it with three students. So what's your ruling on a student taking, say, a week off for family vacation?
Uh so through you, Mr. Mayor, the students are asked before the campground and marina even opened, which days you would like off during the summer. They submit it uh in writing and that's approved. Other than that, then they aren't permitted uh any vacation unless it's an emergency, family emergency. Last year, we did have quite a few instances where staff would say they weren't feeling well or sick with the ongoing pandemic. Uh staff felt we weren't able to tell them that they had to go to work, even though they had a fever or cough.
Okay, so but on vacation, so if I you hired me for the summer, uh God forbid, but and you I give you two weeks off? But and I'm a preferred candidate, you're gonna give me two weeks off in the summer to go go away?
No.
Okay, so you're gonna deny it? Okay, and are we denying it before we hire them or after?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, one of the questions that is asked in the interviews and it was asked last year, will you require any time off throughout the summer? How much time and when? And picking candidates, uh that is taken into consideration of what everyone's availability is. Obviously, we need students and staff that are available to work.
So just a suggestion, I wouldn't ask that question, I would say in your preamble for the interview, I would say that this is a a tourism based job. We need you, if you have a major family vacation booked, tell us now and it will factor into our decision. Because if you say that you're open to vacation, then you know, I come to you crying because I've got a once in a lifetime trip to, I don't know, Banff with my family, what are you gonna do, right? So I I would almost be that, that needs to be a condition of employment. That's my last for staff.
Anything, Council Lewis?
Good.
Anything further, Council Mellon?
No, I mean, your comment about two supervisors, if you can find the right supervisor, yes, but we still need one more summer student. As far as I'm concerned, three between and a supervisor between the two, that dog's not gonna hunt, especially June, July, and August when it's busy, both at the marina and at the at the campground. If you can find the right supervisor, one might do it, but as far as I'm concerned, we need an extra body there. Should be two at each. Uh it just logistics, scheduling, the whole bit will, you know, if you have one supervisor and two students or three students and you got one student off and then all of a sudden they're pulled away, whatever, like I mean, to me, you're gonna, it's gonna be more bang for your buck in both facilities if you have enough staff. You gotta have the right staff, yes, supervisor, somebody that's gonna make sure the students work, but and Deputy Mayor Gardner's right, you know, you imagine if somebody came to my farm and say, oh, by the way, I want a month off in June or July when I'm baling hay. Oh, yeah, that's fine. I'll run the hay mallow, don't worry, you go out and enjoy yourself. No, I mean, if they're working on a seasonal thing, I mean, you know, don't let the door hit you on the way out if you want a week or two off through the summer. Yeah, so but uh the staffing, that's where I'm on the staffing, you know, I think we need another body, at least one more body. What do we get, just out of curiosity, if we're successful with all the summer student grant program, how much comes out of our pocket on the summer student program if we have them for the full duration?
We we usually get um anywhere between three and $4,000 depending through Canada Summer Jobs uh per position. It all depends on the amount that is allocated to the municipality. So last year, we actually got approved for roughly 70 some thousand dollars in Canada Summer Jobs, but that's not guaranteed because it depends on their allocation and depends on how many submissions uh are put in by municipality. So it ranges, but there is a maximum that they that they provide.
I think that has to be incorporated in our in our uh our fees and stuff if we don't, just make up the shortfall. As far as I'm concerned, three is not enough, three summer students, not enough. One supervisor maybe, Mayor, but.
Okay, Austin, go ahead.
Uh so through you, Mr. Mayor, uh two students at each was proposed in the 2022 budget, but given the fact that we reduced the marina budget, one of those students was removed uh for cost savings in 2022.
We got a, the budget numbers will be crunched in a few minutes to make up for that.
Okay, so question for, in 2019, what was the operational numbers? That may predate you, but how did we run the marina and the campground? If you can figure that out.
Financially?
No, bodies.
Bodies?
How many bodies did we have, okay, Austin, go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, in 2019 and to my understanding years previous, there was a supervisor at the campground, a supervisor at the marina, and two students at each. Or no, one student at each, sorry.
One student.
One student, yeah.
Okay, in 2020?
In 2020, there was one, so through you, Mr. Mayor, there there was one supervisor and three students.
2021?
In 2021, Mr. Mayor, so through you, there was three students.
No supervisor?
No supervisor.
That was a disaster.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we need a supervisor, it's the number of students that that person can handle to 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 get the roles done. I I I I think one supervisor, good supervisor can run both. If we have the complement of students, that person needs to run those facilities in the hours that make logical sense, so. Two, usually.
Two.
Two.
Yeah, there's always two, you don't want one.
Yeah, is if if the budget doesn't allow, why don't we use uh half of one of their time uh to assist with, it'd probably just be washroom cleanup, right? They could go over halfway through their shift.
They're dressed in periodic costumes.
Not all the time, they're not.
Well, they tend to be.
Well, it it's flexibility, though, again, we're comparing like Carmen House is not upper Canada Village. So you know, and on a Monday or Tuesday, you probably have
If they do it before.
Three visitors there, right?
Well, I understand that, that's a challenge.
Keep them busy, because that's the other problem with with um hiring summer students. If they're just standing around bored out of their tree, they're not gonna come back, like you, and I'm not saying cleaning bathrooms is the end all be all, but keeping them busy, um I think there needs to be some out of box thinking on that. If we've got two students sitting at one spot that's within what? Metres of where we potentially need another body, why would you not try to use those better, right? Just a suggestion.
Yep, go ahead, Council Lewis.
Shannon, are we planning on applying for a student for each of the malls? We talked about that a while back.
Why wouldn't we do that, Council Lewis?
Nope. And I and I don't believe there's any students for the Carmen House, I don't think, this year either.
Oh, no?
That was my understanding.
Okay, okay. No, we while we talked about hiring a student for the mall to not only water flowers and stuff like that, but give uh Mr. Dupuy a hand if he needed it. Because he takes care of both Iroquois and Washford.
And does a good job, I understand that, but those kind of nice things, no disrespect to anybody, should be BIA and and business groups doing that. However, I know what's gonna happen, it's gonna end up being us. So.
Yeah, and I think that conversation was at a BIA meeting that we had that conversation.
Yes, I think it was, yes.
Yeah.
No, just.
Perhaps we also need to talk with the chamber and see what's in their mind this year. They they have different direction and we have not, I have not heard nothing from them in recent months and and maybe they're doing something, but I suspect they're probably gonna pull it back from the, how many did they have last year?
Oh, my God.
They had uh six and we took them on for, we took four of those on for about three weeks, two weeks, and had them do other things, they didn't have enough work.
Yeah, and I don't know if they'll do that this year, I and I haven't talked to the the chamber president in a long time, so, or their staff, so.
It seems like every time I go by, there there's nobody there, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna assume they don't have, they're not gonna have six. I'm pretty sure guarantee that, so. Okay, so you have some direction on staff. That imp- uh implicates the budget. Um how much were you planning on putting fees up, what was percentage wise?
Uh so through you, Mr. Mayor, on the schedule, it was slated for 2% annually over the next five years. However, as mentioned, if if council wishes to go higher than uh Lachlan and myself have uh the numbers for seasonal rates for five, 10, or 15% increase for council's consideration.
Well, I don't know, whatever number works, if you need five, you need five. Place can't lose money, place gotta bring money in so you can do your capital projects. I'm gonna tell you right now that, you know, you wanna do water and sewer on one line, which is probably great, I know lots of people have talked about it. But after spending $70,000 and putting on a line at the Iroquois Beach House, $60,000 ain't gonna cut her. Simple as that, you pretty well have to have 100 grand sit in your pocket. So basically, you'd say, well, we gotta keep on accumulating dollars so you can physically do it. The other the other challenge that I left you with and was how much of your wages are allocated to this and that resource? It may not be high, but it's still a number. And then I'd like to see a number for the building. The building's not free. Last I checked, the meters are a problem, the gas bill's our problem, you wanna put a telephone line, that's our problem, all those things add up. We don't have the manager of facilities here, but I imagine he's probably gonna look down the road and say, this is gonna be one of our more expensive buildings and then you don't have the dollars in the pocket to deal with it. But, one has to remember, it was $350,000 out of this municipality that paid for the sponsor, for the building. Mr. Ross paid the rest, but it still has to be looked, everything has to be looked after by South Dundas in the end. I know that he has wishes that we don't charge campers and charge the bowling and charge the airport for the use of the facilities, and to be honest, I think the hall can be, shouldn't be charged as long as it's managed. The kitchen's another deal. Kitchen, you know, the bowling club has some ownership there, and then they did the work, that's fair enough. And, oh, and the airport, people are going to basically take it for a weekend, and that's fair enough. But if they're, if the, and if the campers just use it for certain small things, that's fair enough, like coffee and cookies and stuff like that, but if they're going to have, or if they want to have meals or potluck or whatever, it's just another facility that has to be looked after. And, but if a non-seasonal, and that would be, you're thinking of that, what that cost is, well, we put it in their fees. You're going to pay extra, but you get all these amenities. And trust me, I don't know what amenities should be at a campground and how we compare. I'm going to leave it up to the two that camp for comparison purposes. My point of view is this, and I know that when we did coffee with council in, in 2019, there were some concerns that we were spending a big pile of money in a campground building that was just for the campers. So, how do we justify that, sitting here, that we spent $350,000 on a building that is for the campers? Well, fair enough, then, what we need to do is make sure, ensure that the fees come back. Everybody says the place makes money, we get $30,000 a year. I challenge that back, saying, no, because we don't put this, 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 and this in there. And I had, I had many discussions with the former CEO here when I was first mayor, and we both came to the same conclusion. No such thing as free. And, and we have to recognize that, you know, the washrooms cost, you know, nice washrooms cost more money. Nice facilities all cost money, the nice kitchen costs money, everything costs money. How do we get it back to make sure that we make enough money that the people of South Dundas can say, it's a good thing to run because we're making a bit of money, we're putting some money aside, everything is fairly accounted for, and then we can say, good enough, we can run a campground and drive on. If, and, oh, we'll go down the marina road, and you know where I want to go on there, so no sense in talking about it, but, I think you're, I think, you know, and I, you know, I can get really silly on, on salaries because Lockland has to do some work on it. It's not much, maybe the CEO has to make sure that everything ties together as being the CAO. So, you know, and if there's any other things that have to be done, it all, it all accumulate. And then there's office supplies and everything else, you know, we have this big magic pot over here that we can just draw, oh, well, we need a piece of paper, no problem, piece of paper goes to here. Now, now I'm getting, sounding like I'm really being silly, but if your mind is there, then the rest follows through. You don't have to follow through, it all kind of, you can, you can literally say administrative charge, shove it in your budget. But if you start with the attitude that, that you want to cover every little penny, instead of saying, well, we'll cover, we cover most, well, you covered most, did you cover everything? And then how much of your $30,000 all of a sudden becomes $20,000? You know, there's depreciation on the building, that's forever, but then I can be real silly, say, what's your, what's your asset management plan say for putting money away for the building? So, you have enough money for the $1.5 million building you need in 50 years? I, I personally, and Lockland and I will have that discussion about asset management and how much you actually put away, because that's a challenge, I, you know, my challenge with that is, why do we put money aside now for somebody else's future use? It's our money, we'll figure it out later, there's a halfway balance in there. But we, we can't forget about every, the building. The building, in my eyes, it was free before because it literally, well, actually, it probably costs us more than you ever think of. And there's not a ton of maintenance now, but that maintenance will pile up, and all of a sudden, you know, don't want to bring Matilda Hall into this thing, but, you know, we never want to get down the road, or you, we have a building that costs us a big crap load of money, but we have a, there's an income source here that has to pay for it. So, that's my, and, and staffing, if you're going to put more staffing in here, then this doesn't work at all. We'll charge campers a fair rate. I don't want to go and charge them, you know, don't put it up, you know, five sounds reasonable for sure, 10 is probably where it needs to be to accomplish where we need to go. But once we charge that, people will expect more for it. So, that's my thinking on, on the campground and the fee schedule. The seasonals, basically, they're your bread and butter, they're the ones that give you the, that's your base. Like, they cover all, that's your zero-budget dollars. If we're going to have transients, and, and to be honest, I know people that do go there on an occasional basis. And, and that's fair enough, I don't mind having a section, that's, that's their section, that they come in, and that gives us the expansion eventually, but they're your bread and butter, they're the extra. Although money from the transients are your profit, so, and, nothing wrong with saying profit. Profit is a good thing to say when you're running a business. Nonprofits don't last, they tend to, okay, well, we don't need to make money, well, at the end, oh, we lost money, that's not a good thing. So, that's what, that's what drives me from running these kinds of operations. These aren't operations we have to do. These are operations we do because we, we can make it work for South Dundas, and the dollars are, are fair to not only those who use the amenity, but especially fair to the residents that have to pay the extra if it doesn't go well. And you always got to keep that in mind, it may not go well some year, and all of a sudden, oh, now what do I do? So, there should be always like, maybe, you know, half, half a year's budget sitting in a reserve. You know? I'm looking at the back corner, and I know we cut, we didn't put any extra in this winter treatment this year. And I'm sure that he's scratching his head at every little snow where it's, it's just piling and piling. So, that's why we have the reserve, you may land up here, too. Like, every, and looking forward is good, I don't have a problem with that, the plan is there, it has to be flexible, of course. Every time, I think, as we go on, the more campers we have and the more people that have, you know, the mobile homes, because some of them are, you know, they're nice, they, they work good, but they take juice, and, and I don't know how much you can run off a 30-amp breaker, but it can't be very much, because that's, there's not much in a house that can run on a 30-amp breaker anymore, so, if you're going to live on it. But we also know that our campers there are fairly frugal, because that's the way they grow up, and, but if you get new people in, those breakers aren't going to work. I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know, how big, how big a breaker would you have on a?
30-amp D30 to run one air conditioner. The big units now, um, well, I just bought a used one, it's 50. Like, you know, 50 is sort of the bigger units, and that's what you're seeing.
So, anyway, plan ahead, but, you know, to me, it's all about dollars, and, and how do you get there? And, and the campground is, you know, I'll be honest, has never cost this municipality money per se if the $350,000 was free, but it wasn't. And, yeah, we use somebody else's money, a previous council made that decision, which was gas tax money, to do the building. That could have been used somewhere else, so it's still, it was our money to use wisely. Not saying this is a unwise investment, the building was done, but we didn't have to spend it. This is a Cadillac of a building. And Cadillacs cost money, you go and, and find out if you need something small in a Cadillac, the Chevy thing is a lot cheaper, so. Anyway, my rant on the budget, you want to keep on going for a bit?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good for another 15?
I'll sneak out and have a, I'll have a bathroom break, go ahead, you can continue on, I'll be.
Okay, if, it's almost 10:30, if we can take a quick break, we'll take seven, seven minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I got to have something here, too, I'm sorry. And if you have any ideas transformed into this or whatever, go at it.
How much did we make in transient sales last year?
So Austin, do you, Mr. Mayor, Austin that I gave?
We have about 40 seasonals at 1,900.
Okay.
So that comes to 76,000. If you look at the entire budget, that means about 10,500. And that's just a quick breakdown from transient.
So I was right, under 15, right? I need my $10,000 in transient camping. So that's a problem. That's a huge problem. That's not, to your point, Mayor, about having the seasonals as the bread and butter and the $10,000 is the icing. And you don't have much icing. So I, just a final comment, it really needs to be looked at as an all-seasonal site. And then you're not promoting. Because, so $10,000, so if you spend $3,500 in advertising, which we'll get to it, you're gonna be lucky if you attract $5,000 more dollars. So how is that a good return on investment? Doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense. And $10,000 in roughly in overnights last year, you could not get into a campground anywhere else. So that speaks volumes about our campground. Because you couldn't get anywhere. People were camping in provincial parks where they'd never camp before, like Voyageur and, you know, All Out, because they literally could not get. There's all, you couldn't get a trailer. So many people were buying trailers. Like, the camping was through the roof. That is a massive red flag if you only sold roughly $10,000. It's huge. It's a huge, people don't want that product for transient. And I'm saying if, to Stephen's, the mayor's point, if you want to keep some, like five sites, fair enough. But I would not hang your hat on that transient camping getting much higher than, I'd estimate a 15, so.
So, before I go on to Council Lewis, you know, the thought of, if you just went to a seasonal campground, then your employee load lessens. So you gotta keep that, you know, it's basically two budgets. This is how we can run it as a seasonal, and this is how we do it. Or we run it seasonal with transient, and this is what it's gonna cost, and does the math make sense anymore? So, and the workload, because you don't need to have somebody there after seven, because nobody else is coming. Sort of deal. You just have to deal with your community and making sure that the majority of them are happy with where they are. You know, and really, the biggest workload's at the beginning, just to get them all settled. Once people settle in, you tend to have your quote-unquote mayor of your community, and they will make sure that things get done right. And it happens. You know damn well what I'm talking about. It's just, there are some that will just stand back and complain in the corner, and then there's some that say, I'll get your complaints dealt with. So, fair enough.
Well, it's jack of all trades, master of none, right? You could have a heck of an amazing seasonal campground with all the programming and curt, like, just build it up to the seasonal and exactly what they want, if they want bocce ball, or whatever the case may be. You could build that up to that. Instead of $10,000 is a joke for the transient, so.
Council Lewis?
I'm not gonna disagree with the deputy mayor now. $10,000 is, is not a lot of money. And how, how many seasonal people do we have there a year?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, typically, in a high-capacity year, we have about 40 seasonals.
And you say we have 70 sites?
Yes.
I rest my case.
Just four seasonal, or four transient?
Forty.
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 Four zero. Now, that's pre-COVID, during COVID, or normal?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that's been staff's experience over the last few years. So taken to consideration that is, that is during the peak of pandemic as well. So I would estimate that in pre-COVID years, the numbers were higher.
Greater, yeah. Okay. Well, and the transient sites, are they kind of on the downhill slope into the swamp area?
So through you, Mr., through you, Mr. Mayor, the seasonals tend to enjoy that southern part of the campground, as well as along the tennis court, and then also the, along the road there as well. So we do have some transient sites, but they typically tend to be more in the center of the campground just as you enter the, the south entrance.
Okay.
I guess it would be the middle entrance, because there's three.
Yeah, well, I understand what, the, the building entrance.
Yes.
I would consider that the main entrance.
Yes.
Okay.
No, that's the only question I have.
Yeah. I gotta agree, you know, we either have to expand our transient site and make it better. And Deputy Mayor Gardner and I sort of spoke at break time, like, I mean, the transient ones that are coming in, they're not gonna, like, there are a lot of nice campsites out there that offer a lot of amenities, that that's what they attract people with, you know? Whether it's playgrounds, or beaches, or musical entertainment, whatever the case may be. That's where they, they gotta draw somebody in. They gotta draw them in, the transient, you know? I think we need to expand on our seasonal, because that's our bread and butter. That's the stable. Like, I mean, on $10,000 at about approximately $50 a night, that's only 200 nights that we rent it out. So you could, you know, you know, you break that down, like, somebody's coming for a Friday and Saturday night, that, you know, that's not a lot. So we, we gotta improve the sites if we're gonna keep the transient. And I think keeping transient sites, you know, the daily, yeah. I think there is, there is a market there, but we gotta, we gotta expand or improve our site, our campground to accommodate that and bring them in, you know? Personally, our seasonal rate at $1,870 for the year, that's cheap. That, your suggestion, Mayor, at 5%, and I know what you're saying, like, I mean, if you back it up, but that's only like $93 increase per site over the year at 5%. Somebody do the math. We got a math crunch around here. That's what I come up with. $93 on 1,870, a 5% increase. That, I'm still thinking we're still too cheap on our seasonal. I know the seasonal ones will say, you know, you know, don't hit us up here. But I'm thinking that's, that's too cheap. And, you know, the daily rate, no, it's, it's in the ballpark. I might put it up a little bit, but, you know, it's hard to find out seasonal rates at other campsites. I tried in a couple that I went to last year, and, well, I did go to, I did stop at Grenville once, I was there once. But, you know, the other two that I went to are just, you know, in seasonal rates, you gotta call, because they just don't have seasonal sites available. You gotta, you're on a waiting list in, in Delta. I know that. They're just not available. They're making more of them all the time, and they're switching the 50 amp sites into seasonal, which is where, you know, it's needed and wanted. But to me, the rate on the seasonal is a little too low. Monthly, you know, it may be even a little bit too low, but at 5%, if you come across the board of 5% until you get to the, you know, to me, on a weekly rate, you should get probably about one day free. And that's where we're sort of running. The monthly rate should be about one week free. But on the seasonal, we're, it's only half, like, I mean, maybe month, or month and a half or two. But if we're open for five months, basically, they're only paying for two months. So to me, our seasonal rate has to go up, too, because that's our bread and butter. We're not gonna, we can't depend on our transient site, Deputy Mayor and I, Gardner and I both agree on that. I, you know, so our seasonal rate, to me, has to go up. It has to go up by more than 5%. I don't know, you know, the water, the sewer line, you know, as far as an expansion on that, that's nice. That is nice. But there's only one campground that I've been into that have sewer. Most of them have dumping stations. We went over this with budget, you know, honey wagon and that whole, you know? I just don't know, we should explore how Delta does it, because that's what Delta does. They, there's, they have a campground four times bigger than us. And they have a honey wagon goes around on a weekly basis. They have a section off, and they pump out their seasonal people. They don't have sewer lines. We gotta, you know, if we, if there's enough of a demand there, you know, for seasonal people with 50 amp service and water, I would start off with 30, because most of them big units probably already had their own inverter system built in. But I would, I, I shelve that sewer line, because you're absolutely right, Mayor, it's, you know, a lot more work to it than just putting a water line three inches below ground level. Everything's gotta be on slope. And I, I would think we need to really, really explore how, you know, some of the other campgrounds do it with seasonal that aren't on sewer. So Delta's a perfect example. I don't know how they do it. I don't know what it costs them. A little 135 Massey on a little honey wagon. I know we went through that. There's a whole environmental compliance thing, and, you know? But my God, it'll be, you know, we have a tractor, if the municipality has a tractor, we can morrow once or twice a week, Jeff.
No, they have, Rec has a small one, the old Cub Cadet, if it still runs.
So, you know, that's all you need, because, you know, put the sewer line in, that's just a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. That, that's, it's nice to have, but they're getting along there without it now. So, you know, I did check, you know, some of them, like, you know, the musical, we're gonna go down now. I have a lot of little things here I was picking away at, the musical entertainment. And I was the one that sort of suggested that, you know, and I've been to campsites that did that. And they started out small and affordable. But let me tell you, if they want to get a musical entertainment weekend in, wow, it's expensive. And, you know, and it, I think it's a possibility, but I think we need to work with local talent. And we have lots of good people that might come in there and put on a show for 50 bucks, you know, you know, a little something, you know, a little exposure for some local talent. Yeah, maybe. But to go, we gotta go slow with that, because, you know, and as far as the clubhouse goes, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it should be open to the public on a rental basis only. Like, you know, well, not only, but I mean, if somebody wants to have a birthday party there, and they want to have 30, or 40, or 50 people there, call ahead, book the thing, it's theirs, like, you know, utilize the kitchen. Because to me, it's gotta be open to the public. The campers can rent it too, maybe at a little bit of reduced rate. But I mean, I don't think, you know, the camper should, you know, get it, you know, somebody's there as a seasonal, and they want to have a family reunion type thing, and they want to go all over there, well, yeah. They can get it at a reduced rate, but I think it needs to be rented out. And maybe at a reduced rate the seasonal, but open to the public that they can rent it out too. I think, you know, that's the one big thing. I think we need to do some improvements on our sites too, as far as graveling and leveling. I know on our, on your five-year plan, some of those sites, as you mentioned, there's some that are really swampy. Nothing will turn somebody off, then drop in a 30-foot camper and mire in a truck in a swamp hole if it's wet. And I've, I've seen it, and it's not pretty. You know, oh, I'm gonna say this. In our policy, it says alcohol strictly prohibited on the campground. Take that out of there. There is no campground this side of the Mississippi that doesn't, somebody's not having a bloody beer. So if it's in there, if it's on our chart, alcohol strictly prohibited, probably everybody's gonna be out there watching this. I don't care. I mean, to sit around and have a beer, if somebody wants to, you know, get picky, oh, he's drinking a beer, it's prohibited on our campsite. No. It, take that out of there, just take it right off our list of what's allowed on the campground. Because I'm sure it's happening now. I mean, I can't imagine, you know? You know, I, to me, I don't think somebody should be sneaking out behind your campground having a beer. Like, I mean, come on, just, just be realistic here. I don't know, it might be OPG land, I don't care. They don't need to know about it. They probably do now. Hello, my name's Archimel, we're gonna have alcohol on your campsite. That's ridiculous. But, you know, we're not having a free-for-all, you know, beer gardens here. But I mean, so take that right out of there. Registration fee, which a lot of campgrounds use now, and you might be more familiar with that than I am, Deputy Mayor Gardner. We pay it. It's around 15 bucks per booking, roughly, I think. And do we have that included in our fee schedule?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, currently, we, we don't, but in light of today's conversation, we can definitely look at adding an administrative charge to all of our bookings, especially as we move towards the online booking system.
That's, that's a, that's a no-brainer. I mean, we, we pay it now, and don't think it, you know? But I mean, that's gonna really kick in on the transient. Obviously, the seasonal people are, you know, they're gonna pay it once, I guess, if they pay it at all. But I mean, on the transient ones, I mean, it just helps, you know, that money goes back into the whole pot. But, you know, the winter storage, we're still allowing that on our site? Where does that kick in as far as the money coming back to our campground? Does that come back to the campground? Where does that go? That comes back to the campground?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, it does go to the campground revenue, and it's $25 a month for winter storage.
Okay. Do we have anybody doing it?
Yes. We currently have six, six or seven trailers down there right now.
Okay, I just wanted to know. I knew we had storage, I just wanted to make sure that money was being circulated back, back into 25 bucks a month. I don't know. Am I stupid? That's a little cheap. I know it's outside, but still, if somebody has, you know, a little, you know, in Marshburg, you got a, you know, a little, you know, so I, I think it should be up, you know, the storage. If they don't want to store it there, well, that's fine, Danny. I would, what would you think?
$200 in everywhere else.
$200 a month.
And that's cheap.
Yeah.
That's the cheap places, outside.
Not outside?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I think we need to be up more than 25 bucks a month. I mean, whether we go 200 or...
I don't know.
100 or whatever, that needs to be up. I mean, these are all, you know, you know, things that are gonna, you know, reflect in the budget. I mean, my big thing is maybe raise it by 5% across the daily and the weekly. I think our 5% isn't enough on our seasonal, in my opinion. That's only $98 over the whole year, so. I, I know it's, it's gonna be, but I don't know, to me, that's just a little too, little too, little too good. But I mean, you're right. If you increase the price, we gotta expect to put the investment back into it to make it better, which will mean better site preparation, graveling, leveling, some things. And I would, I would highly encourage us to up, up the work plan as far as expanding the sites. It works, I forget, I'll have to find it in here. It's not, it's a little bit later down in our one, three, and five-year plan. So, you know, if you're gonna have more sites, and you want to make, you know, that way, maybe you can make some more seasonal sites, or monthly sites, I think that's it. Oh, one other thing. We're gonna put the, and I never thought of it, I probably supported it at budget time, about, as far as putting the lending library down there. We're not gonna lend out our canoes and kayaks to the campers. That's for general public, I'm sorry. If, I know at other campsites, Delta, you rent a canoe, not a lot of money. You rent the canoe, you rent the paddle boat, you know, whatever. To me, if somebody, you know, because it's gonna be picked up a lot by, you know, the campers. So to me, I think that should be open to just the public. I, I'd be renting out, you know, that sort of thing. But that's just me. The lawn bowling, that's not open to as far as the equipment, the balls and stuff?
No, no, that's their club, you can't.
Moaning lawn bowling, but I guess unless somebody brings in a lawn bowling club, or something like that, we really don't have lawn bowling, because unless they bring their own stuff.
They'd have to work with the Lawn Bowling Association, the, the.
I think that needs to be best by the.
The.
Tennis courts are open, eh?
Tennis courts are open, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, that's all right. But as far as lawn bowling, I mean, that might be a little, you know, Aztec you can put in there, you know, to work with lawn bowling, maybe, yeah, they might be, you know, more receptive to say, yeah, maybe, yeah, you want our lawn bowling stuff? We'll rent it out to you for.
Well, they're always looking for members, I heard.
Yeah, and, you know, rent it out for 25 bucks for a couple hours, or whatever the, the balls and whatever. But yeah, and, you know, that's something, yeah. Okay.
Then you hear your notes?
I think I'm, yeah.
Okay, final thoughts, and then I'll wrap it up, because we've got lots of ideas. We're not gonna solve them positively.
No.
I found the seasonal site charges for the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, as well as their rules. So when you rent out a campsite, people are allowed to drink on their campsite, because it's like an apartment, almost. You're renting it out to whatever, so you can enforce what goes on and on the campsite. It's, it's walking around with open alcohol, that is the problem. So they charge for comparable, so if I looked at Riverside Cedar Campground, 15 amp seasonal site. And Riverside would be comparable. They don't, actually, they, actually, it's not comparable, because we have a nicer building and we have a beach close by. They charged 2,800. book the thing, it's theirs, like, you know, utilize the kitchen, because to me, it's gotta be open to the public, the campers can rent it too, maybe at a little bit of reduced rate, uh, but I mean, I don't think, you know, the camper should, you know, get it, you know, somebody's there as a seasonal and they want to have a family reunion type thing and they want to go all over there, well, yeah, they can get it at a reduced rate, but I think it needs to be rented out, and maybe at a reduced rate the seasonal, but open to the public that they can rent it out too. Uh, I think, you know, that's the one big thing. Um, I think we need to do some improvements on our sites too, as far as graveling and leveling, I know on our, on your five-year plan, some of those sites, as you mentioned, there's some that are really swampy, uh, nothing will turn somebody off than dropping a thirty-foot camper and mowing a truck in a swamp hole if it's wet, and I've, I've seen it, uh, and it's not pretty. Uh, you know. What else, oh, I'm, I'm gonna say this, in our policy, it says alcohol strictly prohibited on the campground, take that out of there, there is no campground this side of the Mississippi that doesn't, somebody's not having a bloody beer, so if it's in there, if it's on our chart, alcohol strictly prohibited, probably everybody's gonna be out there watching this, I don't care, I mean, to sit around and have a beer, if somebody wants to, you know, get picky, oh, he's drinking a beer, it's prohibited on our campsite, no, it, take that out of there, just take it right off our list of what's allowed on the campground, cause I'm sure it's happening now, I mean, I can't imagine, you know, you know, I, to me, I don't think somebody should be sneaking out behind your campground having a beer, like, I mean, come on, just, just be realistic here, I don't know, it might be OPG land, I don't care, they don't need to know about it, they probably do now, hello, my name's Archimel, we're gonna have alcohol on your campsite, that's ridiculous, but, uh, you know, we're not having a, a free-for-all, you know, beer gardens here, but I mean, so take that right out of there. Um, registration fee, which a lot of campgrounds use now, and I, and you might be more familiar with that than I am, Deputy Mayor Gardner, we pay it, it's around fifteen bucks per booking, uh, roughly, I think, and do we have that included in our fee schedule?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, currently, we, we don't, but in light of today's conversation, uh, we can definitely look at adding an administrative charge to all of our bookings, especially as we move towards the online booking system.
That's a, that's a, that's a no brainer, I mean, we, we pay it now and don't think it, you know, but I mean, that's gonna really kick in on the transient, obviously, the seasonal people are, you know, they're gonna pay it once, I guess, if they pay it at all, but I mean, on the transient ones, I mean, it just helps, uh, you know, that money goes back into the whole pot, but, uh, you know. Uh, the winter storage, we're still allowing that on our site, where does that kick in as far as the money coming back to our campground, does that come back to the campground, where does that go, that comes back to the campground?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, it does go to the campground revenue, and it's, it's twenty-five dollars a month for winter storage.
Okay, do we have anybody doing it?
Yes, we, we currently have six, six or seven trailers down there right now.
Okay, I just wanted to know, I knew we had storage, I just wanted to make sure that money was being circulated back, back into, uh, twenty-five bucks a month. I don't know, am I stupid, that's a little cheap, I know it's outside, but still, if somebody has, uh, you know, a little, you know, in Marshburg, you got a, you know, a little, you know, so I, I, I think it should be up, you know, the storage, uh, if they don't want to store it there, well, that's fine, Danny, I would, what would you think?
Two hundred dollars in one, everywhere else.
Two hundred?
And, and that's cheap, that's the cheap places, outside.
That outside?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think we need to be up more than twenty-five bucks a month, I mean, whether we go two hundred or...
I don't know.
A hundred or whatever, that needs to be up, I mean, these are all, you know, you know, things that are gonna, you know, reflect in the budget, I mean, my big thing is maybe raise it by five percent across the daily and the weekly, I think our, five percent isn't enough on our seasonal, in my opinion, uh, that's only ninety-eight dollars over the whole year, so, I, I know it's, it's gonna be, but I don't know, to me, that's just a little too, little too, uh, little too good. Um, but I mean, you're right, if you increase the price, we gotta expect to put the investment back into it to make it better, which will mean better site preparation, graveling, leveling, um, some things, and I would, I would highly encourage us to up, up the work plan as far as expanding the site, it works, I forget, I'll have to find it in here, it's not, it's a little bit later down in our one, three, and five-year plan, so, you know, if you're gonna have more sites and you want to make, you know, that way, maybe you can make some more seasonal sites, um, or monthly sites, I think that's it, oh, one other thing, we're gonna put the, and I never thought of it, I probably supported it at, at budget time about, as far as putting the lending library down there, we're not gonna lend out our canoes and kayaks to the campers, that's for general public, I'm sorry, if, I know at other campsites, Delta, you rent a canoe, not a lot of money, you rent the canoe, you rent the paddle boat, uh, you know, whatever, uh, to me, um, if somebody, you know, because it's gonna be picked up a lot by, you know, the campers, so, um, to me, I think that should be open to just the public, I, I'd be renting out, you know, that sort of thing, but, uh, that's just me, the lawn bowling, that's not open to as far as the equipment, the balls and stuff?
No, no, that's their club, you can't...
Moting lawn bowling, but I guess unless somebody brings in a lawn bowling club or something like that, we really don't have lawn bowling because unless they bring their own stuff.
They'd have to work with the, the lawn bowling association, the, the...
Tennis courts are open, eh?
Tennis courts are open, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, that's all right, but as far as lawn bowling, I mean, that might be a little, you know, Aztec you can put in there, you know, to work with lawn bowling, maybe, yeah, they might be, you know, more receptive to say, yeah, maybe, yeah, you want our lawn bowling stuff, we'll rent it out to you for...
Well, they're always looking for members, I heard.
Yeah, and you know, rent it out for twenty-five bucks for a couple hours, or whatever they, the balls and whatever, but yeah, and you know, that's something, yeah. Okay.
Done, you hear your notes?
I think I'm, yeah.
Okay, final thoughts, and then I'll wrap it up, cause like, we've got lots of ideas, we're not gonna solve them positively.
Uh, I found the seasonal site charges for, uh, the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, as well as their rules, so, when you rent out a campsite, uh, people are allowed to drink on their campsite, cause it's like an apartment, almost, you're renting it out to whatever, so you can't enforce what goes on and, on the campsite, it's, is walking around with open alcohol, that is the problem, um, so, they charge for comparable, so if I looked at Riverside Cedar Campground, uh, fifteen amp seasonal site, um, and Riverside would be comparable, they don't, actually, they, actually, it's not comparable, cause we have a nicer building and we have a beach close by, uh, they charge two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars a season, um, and they, uh, of that, four hundred and fifty dollars is non-refundable, so, their two-service fifteen amp site is three thousand and change, and their two-service site thirty amp is thirty-one hundred, actually, almost thirty-two hundred, so, um, when you're searching these, don't do seasonal, do extended stay, I had a little light bulb go on, and I was like, oh yeah, it's extended stay, so, I can, Austin, I can send this to you, so you see it, they also have their rules and stuff like that, um, my last comments actually have nothing to do with the fees, I did have some concerns about the marketing and the tourism portion of things, um, I'm hoping the answer is yes, but I think it's probably no, did you loop in economic development for tourism, cause you've got some plans around, uh, a promotion, your staff is gonna be promoting tourism, uh, this council, uh, gave economic development back tourism, so, that is actually under their purview, and we have a tourism advisory committee, where you've got decades of tourism experience sitting on that committee, so, just wondering if you've touched base with them, and I really would caution if the answer's no, that we get over the silo thing, that you need to incorporate anybody in this, because tourism committee and their budget actually has advertising, uh, dollars, and if you're thinking of a plan, then it's natural to not duplicate, cause it's, I mean, this is a fairly small government, so, you know, so I don't know, Austin, I, I'm, I think I know the answer, but...
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I did have a conversation with Rob about a year ago, but in recent times, discussing this operational plan specifically, uh, we haven't discussed tourism, uh, that's definitely something that we can discuss and, uh, and loop in economic development as well as tourism, to make sure we're not stepping on anyone's toes, as well as promoting it properly to how they, the committee and, and Rob sees fit.
Yeah, cause, I mean, the tourism part of it, the, the committee has done, and, and Rob has done phenomenal work, uh, in the uptake, and, um, uh, I was somewhat concerned, um, when you're talking about hiring staff that's gonna promote tourism, when you're talking about spending your summer in South Dunlass, which is actually a campaign, uh, that the tourism committee has actually already worked on, um, it just, the duplication, the duplication and siloed approach just kind of needs to end, and that's where I'll leave it.
Okay, two comments before I just basically send the pile back to you and come back to council. Um, percentage-wise of the transients that come in, um, that are associated with the seasonals that are there, in other words, mom, pa are here, and then kids come in with grandkids, and that's their weekend, and they go away, how often does that happen?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, as far as immediate family, I would say roughly around fifty percent, uh, another twenty-five to thirty percent of that is also, uh, group camping, and although they might not be immediately related to the seasonal campers, they are friends of theirs, and they tend to come and spend time with their friends during events, uh, like the music festival and so on during the summer.
Okay, so I, I guess we can tie, you know, to go to all seasonal takes them out, and that might be, you know, I don't think we have enough seasonal to make that work, and have them pay all the bills, like I said, the transients are the ones that, you know, they're the, they're the profit end of your business somehow, some way, that's how you're gonna make it, it's gotta be more than ten grand. Um, feedback from the, the seasonals, even transients, is there any, did you incorporate some of that into your thoughts as you built the plan, or is there things that we as council need to know of, so they don't come to us and say, well, these were our ideas, how come, where did they go?
Absolutely, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I have had plenty of extensive conversations with the campers, as well as the boaters, um, specifically, their main concern last year was the staffing level, um, down at the campground, as well as, uh, campers coming in late at night and staying, and then, then leaving, uh, we've, staff felt as though that a booking system will mitigate a portion of that, as well as, uh, extending staffing and reintroducing a supervisor down there will help, uh, mitigate all those issues for 2022.
Okay, well, I'm sure that, you know, I guess the one thought I'd have is that, that some of the, uh, those who like to be involved, I don't want them to think it's their campground, but if someone comes in, they could, you know, they can, basically, you need to call that number, or, you know, I'm not saying they have to do that, that's not their responsibility, so we need to come up with a plan that still works, um, but it, to cover every hole may be impossible, and that's, that's part of the challenge, so anyway, my, in, I think you got a lot of ideas from council today, you know, I think you have to, I wouldn't say you have to throw the whole thing out, but, uh, come back to council and, and focus on the work plan, focus on rates, focus on budget, uh, get rid of the fluff, and, and, and if it's done right, we can have a five-minute turnaround conversation, if it's not, it'll be another hour, and I'd rather it not, CEO, any comments before I go on to the next one?
No, I think, uh, we'll, we'll take the comments made by council, my, my one thought is, you know, we talk about allocation of supplies and staff wages, we can do a similar model like we did with the water and wastewater, where we charge an administrative fee within the, its contribution from the campground, that goes back to our tax rate, so we can come up with some, some different, um, models like that, and bring it back to council with incorporations of, uh, different hours for, uh, so that there's more coverage, as well as, uh, some other, um, ideas based on comments from council.
Okay, so, just, I'll make it one final note, so when I started in this responsibility as, as counselor in 2007, the campground basically just ran, it made us money, that money literally went back into the general funds, and now we've evolved to, how do we make it, I wouldn't say upscale, but a better campsite, and reinvest all those funds, so that, that's a different thought process, you know, you can just, you know, and Council Lewis was, you know, part of that group of staff that ran, well, not technically ran it, cause we had people that ran it, volunteers, cause they were, they camped there, but they ran the whole thing, and I'm not sure the arrangement was, but it worked, but now we've upscaled everything, so now, we're running it like a business, and the last I checked, the business doesn't make money, or has at least projected to make some money, and then reinvest in the business over time, then we're in trouble, and, and at least we've, the only time this thing has really cost us, cost South Dunlass money is the new build, it's an asset, but trouble is, it's just, you know, as Council Mellon said, you know, it's a public asset too, so, that's probably a challenge and a stretch, but, um, anyway, every nick, you know, no nickel and dime it, but I know Lachlan's at the back, and he's good at nickel and diming, so I, he, I think he's heard what we want to see coming forward, and you work with him, and come up with whatever, a reasonable fee structure, if you come back at fifty percent, we'll throw, you know, we'll not be happy, so, let, let's see where we can go from there. Okay, so that was, I'm not sure if that was the easy one or the hard one, but now we're going to the marina operation, so, I'm gonna request that we just focus on operations, we'll just take out all the fluff out of your speech, and, and we'll just go to where we are concerned, and, you know, this all started by not a penny of South Dunlass dollars goes into that marina, so, how do we, and, yeah, we zero-budget it, but we all know that zero-budget has a risk, and that, that there's no, no extra in it, so anyway, the floor is back to you, and we'll see where we go.
Perfect, so thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, just skipping to the operational portions of the marina, uh, looking at the hours of operation, uh, we currently have Monday, ten-thirty to six, Tuesday, eight-thirty to six, Wednesday, eight-thirty to six, Thursday, eight-thirty to six, Friday, eight-thirty to six, Saturday, eight-thirty to seven, and Sunday, nine to four-thirty, in similar fashion to the campground, obviously, as mentioned before, with the supervisor, supervisors' priority being the marina in the early hours, however, we can revisit that in lieu of the campground discussion, uh, as we get into the financials, uh, we're gonna provide council with a brief overview, and then afterwards, I'll allow Lachlan to explain the nickel and dime a little further. Um, so, we have updated our comparable chart, and from just over a year ago, uh, it, it does show that surrounding marinas have increased their rates dramatically or drastically, uh, currently, four major surrounding competitors are sitting at a rate of sixty-two to sixty-five dollars per foot for a seasonal slip with thirty amp service and water, uh, in accordance with our previously approved plan, uh, the Galco County Marina was scheduled to be at a rate of only forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents per foot, uh, for a seasonal slip with thirty amp and electrical, uh, with that being said, staff have developed three options for council to consider, as well as two implementation strategies for council to consider regarding fees, uh, the options include a thirty percent increase to fees, forty percent increase to fees or a price match, while the implementation strategy of either an all-at-once approach or a two-year stage approach, uh, will be presented to, for council's consideration. Um, as mentioned, we can revisit that, and Lachlan will be able to more, provide more information as far as nickel and dime, um, looking at the five-year capital plan, uh, obviously, staff asked council to keep in mind that whichever direction we may choose to go with the fee structure, opportunities can be expanded upon accordingly, so year one sees the updates to the OPG weir, uh, the implementation of a recreation area on the South Point, landscaping, security, and safety enhancements in regards to lifesaving equipment, um, and a holding tank pump replacement, year three shows the completion of all loan, loan rees, loans repaid, um, associated with the marina, as well as a replacement of the boat ramp dock, uh, and a potential update to our fuel system, uh, staff let council note that we have began discussions with Ultramar, uh, in regards to potentially looking at a similar system to our public works department, if council so chooses to do so at that time, um, and finally, year five shows an expansion of the electrical to the finger docks, as well as an update to the marina office and bathroom facilities, and if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, I guess we can... Bring it back here. I'll just open the floor, go ahead, Council Mellon, we'll start with you.
Oh, okay, um, wow, okay, um, the hours of operation are wrong, especially weekend, um, Thursday, at least Friday and Saturday, gotta be open longer, don't need them there that early in the morning, I gotta go back up here and find it again, um, that's sort of the campground type thing, I think we need one more body, be, between the four, four bodies between the two sites, I, I think, to me, cause if, for every time somebody's not there to pump gas, you know, you, somebody comes in, nobody there, they leave, you might as well have a blimp flying over top, don't stop at your call for gas, cause that'll spread through the boating community, and they just won't stop, and that, it's, that's terribly dangerous, same as, um, you know, if you want the doctor, same as if you want the camp, you camp there, you go there, nobody there, so, uh, you know, it may cost you a little bit more on your initial, uh, startup, you know, but, and you may not see, if you will, immediate financial return, but you will see it down the road, because people will talk, and they'll say, well, don't go to your call, nobody there to get gas after six or whatever, so, we need to have people there later, um, I think our, um, our rates on, are just not, just not enough, um, there was a few things here, um, I'm not so sure if we can afford to phase this in, uh, when there are, there are different options, and this will be, uh, to me, the discussion to have, whether we, you know, all at once or phased in, I don't really think, in my mind, we can afford to phase it in, we need to get to where we've done, and I've seen it for years now, where nobody wants to take that, you know, big jump, if you will, uh, we need to, you know, and nobody likes it, but the fact of the matter is, you've got, to me, you gotta do it, keeping that in mind, if we do a one-time, you know, whatever, all-in approach at one time, whether it's thirty percent, forty percent, that money, they, they're, they're gonna wanna see investment back into the marina, the same as a campground, yeah, I'll pay more, you know, to get us up to our competitors around us, but we have to show that, you know, they're getting money, you're getting bang for their buck, uh, so I think, you know, we gotta be ready for, to invest back into that, um, you know, little improvements on the, on the marina, you know, uh, you know, the students, if they're there, they should be helping, you know, and that's the one thing you hear, they just, you know, they need to be out there working, nothing, you know, nothing will discourage a, a seasonal boater or seasonal camper more than, you know, I'm paying these fees, and, you know, we want to, you, let's see people working, let's see people helping, you know, uh, load boats or, you know, putting boats in at, at the slip, you know, unloading the boats at, at the ramp, so, that's, you know, some of the things, on the pricing, I'm, I gotta find it here, uh, why is there a difference in seadoo on seasonal, I realize they're smaller, but if they're in one of our floating dock, uh, floating slips, one of those slips, I don't care if it's a, a twenty-foot fishing boat or a seadoo, I mean, it's taking up a, a slip, so, you know, if you're charging everybody else by the foot, and then the seasonal, a seadoo on the seasonal, to me, that dog, that dog don't hunt, I mean, that just, to me, that doesn't make sense, you know, I mean, we gotta, I think we need to bring up our daily, and I don't think probably we make a lot on the daily, maybe not even on the weekly, maybe more so on the monthly and, and the seasonal, they're the, you know, the seasonal are, are bread and butter up there, same as the campground, and, uh, you know, us at forty-one, sixty-one, no wonder we're not making any money, you know, that's just, I'm sorry, when everybody else is, you know, sixty-two to sixty-five, yeah, you know, you know, this is a no-brainer, we get it up, and I'm not suggesting we get up to sixty-two, which is Prescott the next lowest, but I have no problem going up to fifty-five, maybe even closer to sixty, cause, you know, and if you hear everybody gonna say, oh, it's too expensive, I'm gonna leave, we're getting people coming down from Kreisler, because they think Kreisler's too much money at sixty-three, and Gallup Canal comes along, holy, forty-one bucks and, you know, it, it's just, you know, but like I said, if we're gonna get our prices up there, and I do it, I'm, I'm willing to take the heat, if you will, to do it at a one-time hit to get our, we gotta make money, and, you know, I totally agree with what you're saying at, at budget time, Mayor Bybels, that, you know, the marina cannot be subsidized by taxpayers' money, and, you know, it's gotta run, and it can run at a business, all, you know, twenty dollars a foot, now, I'm not suggesting we go up to twenty dollars a foot more on the seasonal, but, boy, you know, that's a, to me, that's, that's where we gotta, that's where we gotta get it, and, you know, I don't imagine we get a lot of daily or, or weekly, uh, people on boats, no, you might get the odd one if they're, Quebec Navy's going through a way, but I mean, other than that, it's, you know, they're, they're gonna flip on through to Brockford or, or Kingston or something, you know, when they're doing their two-week run, so, I don't know, right now, I think I'll shut up for a while, the hours of operation has to be expanded, same as the morning, we don't need people there first thing, you know, bright and early in the morning, they'll get yelled at, if somebody's in there with a weed eater waking somebody up, you're gonna get a weed eater throwing in the river. So anyways, that's, that's all for now, Mayor, I'll let the member of council contribute here.
Council Lewis.
Well, the, the hours is the same as the campsite, I don't think that we need a supervisor there at, at eight-thirty, uh, definitely not thirty-five, forty, uh, because that is, that is working class hours, forty hours a week, uh, you know, you call, you call this person the supervisor, but that supervisor's in the field, and so I would say forty hours, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Mellon, I don't think we need somebody there at eight-thirty in the morning, uh, I would say ten, eleven o'clock, and kind of split it up and leave them there a little bit longer, uh, forty-one, sixty-one a foot, uh, now, I don't, especially whenever the rest is sixty-two to sixty-five, I'm not as greedy as Councilman Mellon, I would split the difference and say fifty-eight a foot, and that gives us, uh, you know, four, four dollars to play with, and... And if somebody pulls in with a 30 footer, that's a savings of 120 bucks right off the bat. So I would, I would go with the 58, and that, that's firm. To me, just to touch on what Councilor Mellon said about paying by the foot for a slip or a seadoo, to me, if you're using a slip, you're using a slip, you pay the same price as what a boat pays. Not by the foot, but whatever we charge for a slip. You're talking about the slips at the West End?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for council, in previous years, we did charge per foot for all boats or seadoos or anything. And that includes on our finger docks, however, in recent discussions with our neighboring marinas, staff found that they are charging, like for the finger docks, they charge a set rate, no matter, doesn't matter how big your boat is, because they only allow a certain size of boat in there, so it's a flat rate no matter what. So that is the approach staff are presenting today for our finger docks. In regards to the seadoo, that flat rate would be for along the wall.
To me, if they're use, if they're along the wall, they're still using on footage. And that would take footage away from a 20 or a 30 or a 40 foot, whatever comes in. I think if they wanna be along the wall, they pay for being along the wall. And that's, that's my own personal feelings. And I, and that's just about all I have to say.
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm not gonna repeat myself, I have the same concerns with the marina as I did with the campground, around the tourism and the staffing and all that stuff, and I believe Austin has heard me. So, definitely the fees. I mean, you know, it's funny, when we talk about the campground, we do have that gorgeous building there now, so that does counteract, we are providing the service. I wouldn't go right up to the full of what they're charging, the 62 to 65, but I'd be just under 60 for sure. But if you're going to raise the fees, then I think, and I didn't see this in the operational plan, do you have any plans of what new facilities you would add to that marina if, if given the chance or? Because if you're upping the fees and you're balancing it out, if you do it right, I think both these places can be successful. And I, I reiterate the fact, not a dime should come from the taxpayers for either one. I don't think residents and taxpayers should be supplementing people's pleasure activities. It sounds, it's, it's offensive, like there's, it's just ridiculous. But, you know, do you have any plans as to what, like if you did, say we did increase by 30%, where would that increase go? Is it just to get, get cost recovery, or is, would there be some investment money?
Okay, so, this is over your head. Lachlan, did you do these spreadsheets?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, can you explain the, it sounds like council wants the all-at-once approach for the 30 and technically the 40 is the one it sounds like we're looking at. Can you just go through them and let us know how we get some, build up some capital? Because I, you know, I will say this, it's nice to compare, but we're not Kreisler, and we're not Prescott, and we're certainly not Brockville, and we're way out of the Kingston League. We're just a little place that's kind of off a bit, that can be a nice place for boaters to be, but we don't have very much there. We have the basics, and that's it. And that's okay, I don't have a problem with that. But when you start charging more, people expect more. And you can whine all you want, say, well, we're not making money, so we have to make money, and they're gonna look at you and say, well, then you need to spend less. Well, I think we're running it as best we can, but we are a municipality and, no disrespect to anybody here, but municipalities don't run a business like a business does, because they have a little more freedom to do what they need to do. And sometimes the owner's there 24/7, he gets paid peanuts, and that doesn't work in our business. So that's, there's differences, you can't compare them. But, anyway, me rambling on. So if we go to page 71, which is the 30% increase all at once approach, do you wanna kind of run through the numbers to see where we have enough investment, reinvestment to make this work? I like the way it looks, but I think you need to explain it a bit better, please.
Okay, and through you, Mr. Mayor, we'll start on page 71, as you suggested, the all-at-one approach at 30% increase. The big numbers, and I tried to highlight them the best so you could follow them easily, would be the third line under docking fees. You can see it's highlighted, I think in this case, in a purplish color, it's 61,000. That's your revenue increase. And then at the very bottom, the thing that changes would be your transfer to reserve. So if you follow that along, it's 14,000 in 2022, 20,000. And these are all surpluses that would go back into the reserve for the marina. So, so then you can add them together, right, so that's now 35, and then 20,000 more, 55, 26, 26, and 27, another 75,000 additional above the operating requirements, and that would be what, in this scenario, Austin would be able to use to up that service, whether that be with staffing or with improvements, 50 amp, more 50 amp service perhaps, all those amenities. If you follow now to page 72, because it's, it's very similar, except for those gray highlighted areas, that 40% increase, that's 58.25, I believe, per foot. So that's, seems to be where council is leaning, that all-in-one approach. Again, 65 would be your revenue in that first year. It does go up naturally after that, and I think we had 2% per year thereafter. And again, transfer to reserve at the very bottom in gray, 18,000, 23,000, 24, 30, 30, 30, so that would be 90, so you know, 50, 140, 140, and then 158,000 into the reserve in addition to paying for the operational requirements. I had a document, just to give you an idea of where we are right now with our reserves. So that reserve's sitting at 20,000 starting, so we're almost adding that much per year under this scenario. Switch it to page 73. Again, now, price match has this, it's probably about 44, 47% approximately. 66,000 would be revenue in the first year, again, increasing by 2,000, uh, 2%, sorry. At bottom of the sheet, transfer reserves, that's where you see that, that accumulation for future spending on either upgraded service. Don't wanna continue repeating myself, it's either towards facilities or staffing, because as you saw in one of the sheets, you had three staff full-time there and the others had more. Perhaps if we want to offer that better service, there's that staffing component plus materials, and that's that 50 amp service. And Austin can talk more about operationally, but, but that's the number that I'm looking at, those gray ones. Now, the all-at-one approach, the only difference would be, oh, sorry, the phased-in approach, would be those exact same numbers halved. We put it there, I know that the councillors of South Glengarry, in my experience, loved phased-in things, and perhaps there's times where you bring it all in at once, and I've seen that. But we wanted to provide you a few options, and we've heard at council that is enjoyable or preferable. So if you go to page, I'm sorry, I just scrolled a little too far here. Phased-in approach, which would mean 15% increase in 2022 and 2023, and you see the impacts again, docking fees go from 48,000 to 54 and 61. And then subsequently, the transfer to reserves would be 7,000, 18, 25. I guess that's 18, I should've bought glasses before I came off my benefits here. That is, then 24, 24, and again, 75, so you're starting to build that amount of money where you could provide the service. I, I don't know if you, you want me to continue, it's the same page 75. The more you increase it, obviously, the more revenue there is, and the more you can do, service-wise, service or operationally. But it does put you in a good spot where you have money and you can consider your assets. I think something I've heard from council, if I may, if we have to return on this one, and I know it's asset management planning, there's a certain set of, we're working on more core assets, and none of these fall within core assets. But we could do a quick look at the buildings, because as the mayor represented, like you can get a free building, but municipalities tend to carry on that next time, right? There's a big fundraising effort to get it and grow the township. The next time you go to the well, there's not as much enthusiasm because the building's already there. So we should look over these buildings, both at the campsite, I'm sorry to jump slightly out of turn here, as well as at the marina, and put a value on them, and if it is a 40-year value and what council wants, because you really need that number. Because if I look at this number and tell you, well, at the end of 2025, we're gonna have 120,000 dollars in the budget or reserve for this, perhaps we need 100, and you want to be fair to your users, as well as your taxpayers, but if we need 100 and some, 115, we have 120 at that moment, then it hits taxation. So I think that's the one refinement that I would, I would bring, based on the conversation tonight, is to find that particular number, and I don't think it's overly hard, and it will be a little bit dirty, because like no numbers are perfect. But I think what I've heard from councils, there is an interest to do percentage increase, seems like 40, because you touched on under 60, and that is that 40% increase. So it would be up to you, if that's your direction, whether you want to go 20 and 20 or 40 at once. And then we'll, we can come back and another committee of the whole and touch up that number, if you need a little bit more confidence on what Austin will do with that surplus money. I kind of rambled there.
No, that's okay, Lachlan, I appreciate that. So, and, and I like the idea that, you know, it is a challenge sometimes to just say, we're jumping it up 40%. That, that's a big increase at once. The 2020 is more palatable, as long as we can cash flow to get to where we want to get to. That means this year, you know, all we can do is the bare minimum and increase the staff to where we can get to, and then we've got to start. And then, you know, to me, that reserve needs about 50 grand in it, and then once we're there, the council of the day can decide, along with staff, what, you got something to do something with. There's nothing worse right now, and it's, and it's been going on for years. You know, well, we can just go to the general levee and pay for whatever we need, and, you know, it's not fair here in these kind of technically businesses. And you might have seen that loan that was generated way, way back, and what happened is that the, the committee, and it was run by a committee up to this council, don't forget, wanted to expand the marina, and they figured, well, we'll just get taxpayers to do it. And then some councillors that were a little smarter and the whip said, no, we'll lend you the money and you make that marina pay back. The challenge with the way the marina was run is the committee were mainly made of those who used the, the marina. Well, I'm not gonna overcharge myself, so I'll just make it work. And now we're, you know, we've gotten to page year four, and we've never made it work as a council. And now we're almost running like the old golf club, and that's why I got a little excited, because I remember, Councilor Mellon and I were on council when we were throwing a lot of money at golfers, and we said, no, more, done. And when we walked away, someone stepped up and, you know, it, it's turned out well for them. That doesn't bother me, as long as it doesn't cost me any money, and the place is roaring, and that money flows through the village, everybody's happy. But there's nothing worse than, than having, trying to run an operational plan, knowing that you're gonna lose money, and, well, we can always just charge it on the, the bottom line, well, that's just, that wasn't fair, that was never fair, but now it's, the gauntlet is down, done with that. And especially since we're not charging enough. My preference is to do the 2020, to be fair to those who were there. I think hitting them at 40% at once is a big hit. 20 is palatable to, I think, the majority of them. I do like the idea of flat rating the slips. Reason B, it makes life easy, like, you know, I know you can kind of guess and say, oh, that boat's 25 or that boat's 30, and I know that, that's kind of a general thing with boating. But once the slip is filled, the slip is filled, doesn't matter if it's a 10-foot rowboat or a 30-foot piece of machinery, the slip is full. The seadoos make sense along the wall, as long as it, you know, the space makes sense and, and charge them accordingly. Question, I got a few operational things, I gotta get my little stickums back out. So, the green space on, in front of the canal where the boats are, how much, what in general are they allowed to use, basically stake out their little area of living space? What, what's the rules, how do we handle that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, in years previous, there were no jurisdiction as far as what, they all typically stuck to fairly close to their boat. However, this year in 2022, we did include in the rules that they were only allowed up to 15 feet, I believe it was, inside, onto the, the grass, just, just to keep everything well-maintained and ensure that they're maintaining that area themselves, if they're gonna be the ones utilizing it, whether it be have a soft top canvas pavilion up there, or, or lawn chairs or so on. That's why we included in the rules this year, just to ensure that they were, if they were gonna claim that 15 feet, it was gonna be restricted to only 15 feet, and they would be responsible for maintaining it, so we don't run into any issues with staff shooting grass or rocks at their boats with the lawnmower or so on.
Okay, well, that's a little bit unique, because you think of Kreisler as just a wooden dock, like this, that, that's a bonus, that they can literally set up cottage. You know, the boats, their living space, and then they got this general space, and, you know, they can bring in their neighbors and friends, and, you know, literally, it looks like a campsite instead of what I would consider a boating area. So, I'll listen to the rest of the council, I think, you know, those who, would everybody have that availability? Or is it just land up those who have the right slips get that availability?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, everyone that's along the wall, that would be paying that fee for being along the wall, would have access to, to a grass area. Whether it's in the rules or not, they do have access to it.
Well, they have to get off their boat, I understand that, but it's a diff, from what I seen last year, it looked like someone was having, had stake claimed for a big chunk of property, and it became their cottage.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why staff felt it was important to implement that rule this year, and kind of mitigate any issues that may arise this year that were similar to last year in that circumstance.
Okay, well, if it, if it's not available to everybody, then there has to be a fee associated with that. If it's available to everybody, and fair enough, then it becomes part of that seasonal fee. Because if I, if I get my slip and I get my 15 feet and my boat's 30 feet, I got 30 by 15, and I've got it set up with a barbecue and chairs and, you know, it, it becomes their campsite, and I'm not saying that's wrong or right, I'm just observing, but, you know, is that a fair approach? Whereas the next guy way down at the other end, and just on a concrete wall, got nowhere to go, and he's got gravel, because that's where he landed up, how's that fair? He's paying just as much per foot, season-wise, right? Quick question, the finger docks, there's no power in any of them?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe three years ago, there was one outlet on the finger docks, however, that was cut off for whatever reason. So that, so part of the plan is to reintroduce electricity out there for boaters that purchase those slips?
Because I believe there is power there, it's a big panel that, that was part of their big plan in 2007 or whatever. They got red money and they were gonna make electrical, and they just did what they wanted to do, and, so I'm just, that's why I question.
Yeah, and again, through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the panel is right there and the building is right there. However, the electricity isn't running out to the finger docks, and even on the finger docks, there's only one pedestal at the end of the dock.
Okay, so, on, on, on looking at the budget-wise, I, my preference is 2020. That doesn't mean we can do what, everything we want to do the first year when you do that, but we'll get to where we want to get to eventually. That's my opinion, I think, you know, as I said, hitting somebody over the head with a 40% increase is hard. So I'll turn it around the table, Councilor Mellon.
So you're proposing 20% this year and 20% next year, Mayor Bybels?
Basically a phased-in approach, as Lachlan has suggested, which is on page 75.
Hmm, yeah. I mean, it'll be a nasty slap, you know, I'm sitting here yapping like I'm saying 40%. I can live with the 2020. I don't know if we need to go 2020 on the daily and the weekly. If you just look at what they're charging, I would bring our daily and weekly up to the bare minimum what anybody else is, which is Prescott, 10.70 instead of 10.30. The monthly, also, I would bring it up, but if you go 2020 on them, you're gonna be, you know, over that. My math isn't real great, but I would bring our daily and weekly at least up to the bare minimum. I can live with the 2020. Are we relating the 2020 to our pump out? And a question on that. We just have a holding tank there now, which we have to get pumped out by a contractor. None of, in, in our spreadsheet, there's no mention on what that, what, what's it costing us to get our tag pumped out on a, on a regular, on a yearly basis? Does anybody have that number? Because, okay, Austin?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so we, in the last two years, we have combined the marina with the campground in regards to pumping out the holding tank. We hired Howard Campbell and Sons. So they would come out and last year we put them on a weekly schedule. So once a week they would come out and pump out both tanks during our peak season. I know David mentioned the number in pump outs in a previous council meeting. Typically depending if it was a regular scheduled pump out, I believe it was around five or six hundred dollars to pump out the tank, per tank. However, if it was an emergency, it was obviously substantially more.
But our campground's hooked, our dumping station, our campground's hooked into our sewer.
Yes.
Is it not?
Yes.
Yeah. So, but we were rarely not utilizing, where are we using a, a pumping service for the seasonal campers?
No, I think he's wrong. So we, you got the marina, you got, you had the beach. Well, he still had the beach house, so it's fixed.
Oh, okay.
And the other ones, Cameron has.
Okay.
Did I say campground? Oh, my apologies. The marina and the beach. I apologize.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So if it costs us five hundred on a weekly basis, let's say, would that be a fair estimate? You know, it's nowhere in our, maybe it's included in there, but there's no, well, come back here.
It's included under the repairs.
There's no place in here where it's included in, in the operational, you know, your spreadsheet unless it's included in.
It's in the repairs and maintenance.
Maybe that's where it is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, our pump out, I think, needs to go up too personally. We're not charging, I mean, I, I would go up to, close to our nearest competitor. And I hit my mouse and I have no idea where that went to. But I, I would, I would match, you know, bring that up. I mean, there's nothing wrong. We're at sixty bucks and nearest competitor is ninety-seven. So I don't know if you want to tie the 2020 into the seasonal pump out too.
Well, you can propose what you want. We're not going to, we're doing the stick on the wall and see what's, stuff at the wall, stick with six and then I send it back and, and see how it all melts.
I can go with twenty. I mean, we've got to get to that forty percent. I would, you know.
You're suggesting that we, I'm looking at 2020 for the seasonals.
Yeah.
But the rest, we can put it wherever we want because that technically is, you know, they want to come in and this is the cost. And I've heard it's.
Twenty twenty on the seasonal, I would match the daily to the nearest competitor. Well, actually we're higher, so we'll just leave it there. Weekly, I would bring it up to our lowest, our nearest competitor. The monthly, the same thing. The seasonal, I would bring it up 2020, as you've alluded to, Mayor Bydell, the sea do. A slip is a slip. As Council Lewis has already mentioned, you know, it doesn't matter if you're on the canal wall and you've got, you know, whatever your footage is, your, some of them jet skis are pretty darn big. So, you know, you know, and that, so they charge the same. The slip is a flat rate and the pump out, I would bring it up. I'm going to, I'm going to propose ninety dollars for a seasonal pump out. I don't know. That's a little less than Prescott. Pretty darn cheap to get rid of some unmentionables.
Okay.
Councilman Mellon?
No, it's fair enough. I would be shocked if you were. No disrespect, Councilman.
I can, I can live with the 2020. I don't have a problem with that at all. As you said, hitting them at forty percent right away, that is pretty, pretty crucial. So yeah, I can live at forty, forty. And Austin, getting back to you, in that five hundred dollars a week pump out, is the Cameron house included in that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I was mistaken. The Cameron house is included in that.
That's what I thought. Thank you. That's it.
Just to, just to add some numbers, I pulled up that and so we're roughly three fifty per site per week for pumping.
That makes sense.
Per site.
That, that's pretty standard charge per site.
I'm okay with the 2020 as proposed. I do like Council Mellon's idea of the seasonal pump out increasing. And I am for any transient prices definitely going up.
Okay. That didn't take as long as I thought, but that's good. So anyway, it won't give you that, you know, you look at year one, you got all these things to do and you got to do what you got to do. The rest, you know, you're going to hope that you can get to year two and then by year two or three, you'll have at least, you know, I don't have a problem with taking like all money out of our pocket if you know you're going to have money at the end to pay that pocket off. That's just like, you know, it's just like me, I'm going to spend money and putting seed in the ground, fertilizing or everything else. But, and I don't get paid until I ship it out the door. So it's kind of that, but it, it's crucial that it's all, you know, at the reserve. If you, if you borrow from here, that you know you've done it and you're going to pay it back. And if it's not, then whoever's here at council needs to know how that whole thing flows. And who knows? You might have a council next year that said, doesn't bother them to lose money on these things. But this council is not, doesn't have that attitude. And I hope that staff gets that and continues on with it. And, you know, I, I don't, no, just, I would never speculate what the next council does at times. You always hope that they, they think it through and we all may be here and none of us could be here. But it's, it's a gamble and that's just the way life works in the municipality. But if you have a good business plan and you present it to no matter what council, it usually flies through. So I think that's crucial to, you know, I think you've got a direction now that, you know, we'll do the 2020, put the other ones up to where they need to be, find opportunities to make money where you can literally make money. Because it's, you have a captive audience. You know, if someone has a boat and they're seasonal and they're not going to take it out to find somewhere else to dump it, they're going to, you can literally charge them where they want. Because this is the rate, this is where we're going. So however, you got to be reasonable too. You can't go charging five hundred dollars for a pump out because they'll look at you kind of stupid and go for a cruise on the St. Lawrence River and they'll pump out. But anyway, anything further? Go ahead.
Yeah, you had mentioned, and I forgot to bring this up, the area like in front of each, along the wall. Right now, do, what do we allow as far as vehicles down there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there had never been a set number before. However, this year we are looking at maximizing that at two vehicles per boat and no more.
Well, stop here now. So you're allowing vehicles on the grass?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, in years past, there, boaters have been parking down on the grass by their boat. Given the, the lack of parking area up top in regards to the boat launch as well as the marina, parking seems to be an issue at the, the marina and the boat launch area.
Okay. You may, you may want to run that a bit better. That just looks, that just looking for trouble and finding it easy and getting back to the old days again, like it, that's a prime public area and just, well, we can drive there. I, I, I'm challenged. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was not. For I was getting to, like, I mean, for our seasonal increase, I don't have a problem with them setting up some lawn chair by their slip and allow for one vehicle per slip.
You can't, you can't do that anywhere else. Remember that. There's nowhere else you can drive a car to your boat.
I would, I would give them that. I, you know, you can say what you want. Any other vehicle and they have to be, that car has to, vehicle has to be tagged. And I would have that gate closed at, if we're going to have the marina open to eight o'clock, that, or nine o'clock, when the attendant leaves, that gate closes and everybody is notified that the gate closes. If you're in there and you're, you're there for the night. Any other guest that comes to visit somebody or you have an extra vehicle, it has to be parked out. And we have a little, you know, a little stickers you get at an apartment building or whatever, you know. I haven't got a problem with giving them some space in front of their slip for what we're going to charge them. And one vehicle only, because sometimes I've seen it get a little busy down there. And if you have a guest or you bring a second vehicle, it stays out by the road and the gate closes at eight or nine or whatever hours we, and that's it. And you don't get in, you don't get out. That's sort of where I would go on that, Mayor Bydell's. In that fifteen feet, you know, if they've got a forty-foot boat and they've got ten or fifteen feet out, they can have a lawn chair and an umbrella and their car. And if they can't get their car in there, then leave your car out.
Okay. Yeah, or else they're taking up more space than they are allowed, right? It's not a park, like their parking spot is in front of their boat. They can park their car there or they can enjoy the, the grass.
If you've got a forty-foot boat, you've got forty-foot frontage. If you've got a twenty-foot boat, you have twenty-foot frontage. That's my opinion.
Any comments?
I don't like that.
Trouble is you're, you don't change, you have to be reasonably changing the culture, right? You're not going to do it all once. You eventually just, now we take that away. Now we take that away. Now we take that away.
I don't want to take it away, but I do think that the parking should be one of the strategies for this year. And I think it should be one car, one boat. And I do think that potentially it might be an additional charge for the second vehicle. I mean, anywhere else, you're charged for the second vehicle. If you camp, if you do whatever, if you're taking up space or they have a visitor parking lot that is not super convenient, it's free, but it's away. Because that clutter, you know, one of my main concerns is I, moving forward, I do want that marina, if we keep it to be successful, and part of the success is you can't feel like you're walking into someone's living space. It has to feel like a, a public space to the mayor's point. It has, if it's going to be successful and they don't want it to be the point where we, the price is so high to chase people away, we, we need, it, it needs to look, you need to feel like you're welcome when you go there. And if you've got everybody's cars all spattered about, people are funny when people are near their vehicles as well, right? So it, it, it needs to be more organized, I think, is what I would say. And to your point, I'm not saying shock them, shock them with the price increase, but it definitely needs to be more organized. That would just be my, I don't know how that's going to look, but it needs to be organized and welcoming.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I think we need to.
Well, bring, bring some common sense back to it. And if we wanted to run it as a public marina, then well, let's make it look like a public marina. Anybody should be able to walk down that grass strip and park their lawn chair and enjoy the view and, you know, have a picnic without anybody coming over and says, this is our space. Or, or have that feeling that you're invading somebody else's space.
And I, and I agree with that. And like, I mean, it just, when people are coming into their boat, I just feel that, you know, they're probably going to want to drive down there, especially if they're bringing supplies and groceries.
But as I said, it's, it's unique that way, Council Mellon, because you can't do it at Chrysler. Chrysler, you're parking in front and you're literally taking stuff down a wooden plank to go to your boat. And you do, and that's Brockville, that's Prescott, that's Kingston, that's everybody else. We have something that's unique where you literally can park your boat beside an old historic canal wall and then have a fifteen by whatever space to yourself to use. I don't, that's okay as long as you recognize that that is your space. You can't have everything else because it became party central and OPG doesn't like it. I don't think we like that anymore. We want a festive atmosphere. We want a welcoming marina. But it, it's for everybody. It's just not those who pay the price. And then it becomes clicky. No? Anything further on the marina? Okay. You, more work for you and Lachlan to do?
Just, just to confirm, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the campground and marina, staff will bring back a report just with updated budget with the administration lines as well as a, a potential asset management plan for the buildings. And then also we can make a few updates to our rules, to Council Mellon's point as well as the, the marina point. And we can bring that back as well.
Yeah. And the fee schedule on, on both of them, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, CDO, we're, we've got, how long will the landfill expansion and transfer station thing? Like, are they scheduled to be here for eleven and now it's twelve?
So they are, they are going to be going through Zoom. I have been connecting with them. They're available at any time. So I don't know how council wants to, if council wants to go through the just report and talk about Taylor Road Bridge and then break for lunch and then do WSP right after lunch. I'll leave that up to council.
Okay. So thoughts on that? And if you can survive on what's in there or we bring something in as a survival on?
You've got cookies. I'm wood. I got a cookie.
Sure.
Okay. Sounds like we're going to be minute of lunch. Staff's got to deal with it too though, so we will break for a bit of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When do, can you ask if they want to run it at twelve thirty? Would that be fair?
Yep, absolutely. Yep. I can connect with them right now and we can do the double surface treatment and the Taylor Road Bridge before that if you want.
Okay.
Can I do, can I have a two-minute break?
Yep.
I'm mostly.
We're not, we don't need disconnect. We'll just run for two minutes here.
Thank you.
My computer's going to run a juice. Mine too. I'm at like seven percent right now. I'm going to go downstairs. I got to stretch anyways.
No, we're not. You can go off. We're not off. No, we're not, you can go off, we're not off. Before we'll take a quick break for lunch, landfill expansion transfer station plan is at 12:30. So we have a review of 2022 road projects and double surface treatment tender results. Jeff, welcome.
So, so through discussion with the CAO and myself, we felt it would, it was wise and the clerk as well to, to bring a quick little report to council. During 2022 budgets, there was said roads which were identified and, and I, and I generated a, a cost on what we knew for those said roads. During budget time as well, a provisional road was mentioned, but tentatively was not budgeted for. So in front of you, you'll see the dollar value in the, the $1,010,701 and $47. Those are, those are the, the pricing which we received from two companies who, who took out the tender and, and supplied a, a cost. This tender, as you know, has not been formally approved yet, so that's why we're, we're talking. So although the, the 1.01 million did come in under the budgeted 1,870,000, it does not include culvert work and it does not include the cost of the Pleasant Valley East section, which was presented as being micro-surfaced. We have since received pricing, however tentative pricing for the micro work for Pleasant Valley. So I'll just give you a quick little breakdown on where we're at right as of now. So if we were to take the, all the roads which are identified in the, in the KIR report equalling 1,010,701 and we were to include the, the budgeted amount which I gave council at the time of 134,490 for Pleasant Valley East for the micro work, then that's coming in at 1.145 million. If we include the costs of the culverts, which is not in this report, and, and I want to apologize upfront, I gave you the wrong number of 5,400, that is the unit cost, that's not the quantity. That's just for the price of the pipe to purchase, to buy one unit cost. It turns out to be 24,000 for the total costs of, of the culvert work. So I'll, I'll, I'll give it to you as the tendered amount that you see at 1,010,701 plus the Pleasant Valley at 134,490 plus the culverts at 24,000 gives us a grand total of 1,169,191. That is over the budgeted amount of 187,000 by a shortfall of 82,15147. So if we were to backtrack now with Saddlemire being the provisional with a, with a rough tendered amount for double surface treatment, and when I say double surface treatment, that includes to pulverize the road, to grade in shape, to add granular material, plus apply the double surface treatment and the fog seal. That's the variable right now and I, and I'm, I'm still not aware of how many pipes there is to replace because there's snow on the ground when we did budgets. I, I, I wasn't able to inspect that. I know there is a three foot diameter pipe that runs underneath Saddlemire. Is it in good shape, is it in bad shape? I can't answer that because I haven't seen it because it's, it's buried in snow. So that's the variable. So I guess what we're, what we're doing here today is I, I would like to get the flavor of council on what roads would you like to see done, which ones would you not like to see done? Would you like to just eliminate the provisional and we're off to the races as I, as I presented at budget? Or do we include the provisional and do we eliminate some? I have some ideas, but I, I would like to hear what, what council has to say because right now we're at a shortfall of estimated 82,000 from, from the budgeted, from the pre-budgeted amount of 1,870,000. So that's, that's where we're at and once we get this finalized, then I'll definitely bring you a, a report for our first council meeting to have this tender awarded and that's, that's where we're sitting right now.
Okay, so my recollection of our discussion at budget was that you did have all these roads on your list and then Council Wells brought up that, that Saddlemire Road should be included. And I thought we finished off that we would include Saddlemire, but make Coogler provisional. And if it didn't work, Coogler would come off and we can just keep it alive because it's, it's two residences plus a farmer, me, that drive down that road. So, and you thought that would work, but 69,000 isn't going to give you your 82 either. I mean, and you're right, the, the risk of the culvert on that drain, needing castle and drain is, is a risk. If, I pretty well, it's probably original yet, so, you know, go ahead. What's your ideas?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so here's, here's what I'll throw at you. Here's, here's my, my interpretation of it and, and I'll be swayed by either way with council. So going through the list, Pleasant Valley, both Pleasant Valleys were identified in the 2022 Roads Need Study. Smith is a poor road. Chenette is a poor road that's long. Ridge is a poor road. As far as investment with pothole patching, staffing, we invest a lot of time on those, on those roads. Saddlemire brought up, it is a key, it's a key network road that takes you to a golf course that sees a lot of residents through the summertime. I, I appreciate that. If we were to remove anything, I would remove Markle Road as it does not service any houses and Coogler as it has two houses and we'll just do pothole patching, some, some asphalt repairs. If we were to eliminate Coogler, Markle from this list and equation, you're having a, you're going to have a cost savings of 125,289 and 27 cents. That's including the pipe work that is needed on Coogler at a cost of $3,600 to purchase the culverts. That's, that would be my recommendation. I'm open to council's decisions.
Okay, well, I see, I see the logic in it.
I can agree with that, that makes sense as explained. I think I would support that.
Yeah, I, I don't have an issue because I know there's no houses right now on Markle Road. So and Coogler, yeah, yeah, sounds good to me.
Council Mellon?
Yeah, I was just going to say we, you know, get rid of the provisional and, you know, we wouldn't be quite at what we needed at 82,000, but your logic makes sense, Jeff. Coogler and Markle because they're not, you know, nobody lives on Coogler or Markle.
No, no. Markle. Our people live on Coogler.
Saddlemire is used more. Yeah.
Okay, you have your direction.
Okay, you'll get a, a formal report for the March 14th council meeting approving this double surface tender.
Okay, so don't leave because we're going to go do the Taylor Road Bridge.
I just wanted to bring this to council's attention because of just being time sensitive.
Don't worry, you'll be happy, Council Mellon. You're going to be really happy when you get done.
Yeah, so Jeff has been working, we're actually waiting for the gentleman to come back from, from out of country. We do have a quote here for council to go ahead and remove the bridge. It can be done within the next couple of weeks. I have reached out to Harold this morning. He indicates that if we can get it done, it's the best bang for our buck. We've got the heritage assessment report. As long as we maintain what's in that report as far as some of the spots, we can get this bridge out for about $7,000.
Council Mellon, what do you think?
Oh, I think we should, yes, get, 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 get it running.
Made him happy for the bridge. Any objections on this side because I think he's carrying a lot of weight here.
It was worth it to see Council Mellon's reaction, I'm okay with it.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So just to give you a little further context with this, the fellow who did supply this quote is back from being out of country. He did visit the, the site. He did question a few things on how did we do it in the past versus what is going to be done right now? I told him that it was a lump sum price, that he's responsible for getting rid of everything. And once I mentioned that, that kind of rejigged his memory and he says, yes, you are, you're, you're correct, Jeff, that's the way we had it set up before with the removal of Taylor or De Vries and the Nine Mile. I asked him if it can be done next week. He kind of hemmed and hawed and he said, I don't think so, but he says, I can definitely probably get it scheduled within the next two weeks to have it removed. I had mentioned the heritage aspect of it and he's, he's totally in agreeance that whatever we need to salvage as being representative of heritage, he, he's fine with that. It, it's very minimal. When you start talking tonnage for scrap steel, it's very minimal on what we need to, to retain. And he's totally on board with that side of things as well. So that's, that's where we're at with the Taylor Road Bridge.
So just to clarify, he's just taking the deck off, the, the, the piers stay?
That is through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. The, the wooden deck will be removed to lighten the load and then the, the bridge itself will be lifted, lifted out via a canter lever style system with an excavator on either side, draw it to either the north or the south and then use the pier as the fulcrum, the pivot point, and then just drag it up onto the roadway. And then at that point, it'll be, it'll be cut up and salvaged as he feels fit on him type of thing. Piers are staying, no water activity is being done, it's strictly bridge removal.
Go ahead.
And just to add with my conversation with Harold this morning, he, he did realize the fact that the piers would stay there, so that will just be included as part of our tender for the removal of the piers by the contractor.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. Because they're going to excavate anyway, so.
Exactly right.
Go ahead.
Going to be taking it to the south side of the bridge?
Item through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure which direction he's going to pull it, if he's going to pull it to the north or to the south. There's really a little bit more room to the south because you've got the adjoining road of South Branch. You have a little bit more of a working footprint versus.
I think it's farther away from.
Than the north side.
The houses on the north side.
Well, I'm going to suggest that, yeah, you pick out where you want, make sure that those people who live in that area, tell them that this is what's going to happen because they've been walking across it and doing things like that and they won't be able to anymore, but just say, bridge is coming out, we got a good.
And I will note that the two bridge close signs that we, that we installed have been moved by somebody and there are snowmobiles driving across that bridge right now. So once we get this problem solved, then we don't have to worry about foot traffic or vehicular traffic.
And I assume you're going to put some concrete barriers.
Then, yes, there'll be.
On both sides.
Piles of gravel, those cement barriers will pass and please, and yeah.
That'll be the end of it.
Yes.
Okay, we're good?
We're good.
Well, I think Council Mellon is going to be a little happy rest today, he doesn't know what to do anymore. Okay, so we're going to go for a 20 minute break and when 12:30 we'll come back on, we'll do the WSP and close session.
Good afternoon. So, yes, as part of the assessment, the first step for us was to confirm the projections. So, we end up using the municipality's population from 2021. And also the way... It's a little different doing this virtually than in person, but very appreciative to be able to have this meeting with you. As you're aware, municipality is quickly running out of capacity at your landfill, your one remaining landfill in Matilda site. We did recently get approval for a 50,000 cubic meter expansion at the site, however, that only leaves us about three to, three and a half to four years remaining capacity there. And as such, we've been trying to identify an outlet for the municipality to deal with their waste management. And the Council has decided that they want to keep it local and have that opportunity for the residents to still locally get rid of their garbage if they, they need to. So based on a review of previous reports that we've provided, you, you've indicated that you're interested in pursuing the transfer station at the Matilda landfill site. And with that, we have developed two options for you to review and consider, and I'll let Christina take over discussing the layouts and so forth.
Yes, good afternoon. So yes, as part of the assessment, the first step for us was to confirm the projections. So we end up using the municipality's population from 2021, and also the waste generation, and estimated a 0.5% increase for both of them. So that's the table that you see on the report, presents those calculations. Also, there was consideration for a 10% and 30% waste diversion rates. Right now, the municipality sits around 12%. So just to know how much waste will be generated and how many bins you will require at the transfer station. This will also determine, yes, the hauling trips required. So the table provides a explanation, a column with assuming twice a week hauling. And based on that assumption, around seven bins will be needed. In the calculation, we use nine bins on the, for the options, just to have some contingency in case of a shutdown or, or yes, or additional waste that needs to be stored on site. So I'm trying to see if I can share my screen so I can walk through the, through the reports, through the options. Let me know if you can see it.
Nope, we can see it.
No?
We can see it there now.
Okay, can you see the, the drawing?
We're good.
We're good, okay. So for both options, yes, the transfer station will be located north of the side attendant office. The vehicles will enter with, through the existing road and turn to the left. The recycled bins will be located first to allow, to incentivize the diversion, and then, yes, the vehicles will turn around and dispose the waste material. So it will be just a one-way traffic, and they will exit the facility. For option one, all the bins and the disposal will occur at ground elevation. There will also be another access road, just to facilitate the collection of the bins and avoid any traffic congestion. And then, option two is the one that contemplates the retaining wall. So similar approach, the vehicles will enter this material, the recyclable will be at ground elevation, the disposal, and then there will be a retaining wall with an access ramp. So the bins are located at ground elevation, but the disposal will occur above ground. The only difference between the, the options is the retaining wall, there will be an access ramp required, and the vehicles, yes, will be driving in one direction. Yes, the access road to collect the bins will remain the same as per option one. So based on those designs, preliminary designs, the advantage of having the bins located at ground elevation and allowing the residents to dispose from above is that they can see the, the bin, because, keep in mind, we have assumed 40 cubic yard bins, which are 2.4 meters high. So when you drop the waste from ground, yes, you would pretty much have to throw it. Other considerations is to have the transfer bins. Documentation was attached as an appendix. The advantage of those transfer bins is that they allow to compact the waste, so it will require less bins on site, and also reduce the hauling frequency. To be able to operate those bins, yes, the power needs to be brought to the site. What else? Okay, and then in terms of cost now, let's look at the table. So the clearing, grading, the access hauling road, drainage, culverts, signs, concrete path for the bins are similar for either option. Option two will have is field placement, the retaining wall construction, two sets of stairs to access the above ground, and a car rail. So we're looking with a contingency allowance of 15%. Option one around 439,000, and then option two around the $955,000. What else? The transfer units, if they, if that's an option to be considered, they run out of about 100,000, plus the supply of the power to the location. So that will be extra for either option that is contemplated. Any questions about the designs?
Okay, so just the, the clarifier, are you looking for a council direction on option one, or, or option two, or option two A, which is the units with the compactor?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so a couple of questions before we go around Council. The simple one, the compacters, they run on electricity, you, you are saying?
Yes.
Okay. We only have single phase there? We need three-phase power to run them?
Yes.
Okay, that's, three-phase caught, all three phases, that kind of wrote 16, so start counting the poles and multiplying that on top yet, so. So that's, that's the challenge. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but if we do it, compacters, we have to get three-phase power down there. It's going to cost you 100 grand probably easy.
And the compacters too, it's something you could look at too in the future. If you don't feel that you want to do it right now due to costs, or you want to have, you know, more time for budgeting for that, the compacters are something that we could add, add a later date.
Okay.
Just something to keep in mind.
Okay, fair enough. And that was my question, I figured they were going to take three-phase power because they would take more than, than the maximum 15. How much research have you done, or information you have on, on the site itself? Because we're not sure if there was garbage buried on that site at one time. Do you have any records of that?
No, so that was also part of the assessment, to do a geotechnical, to confirm the soil stability.
Okay, but if we find out that somebody's buried garbage on that site, will that basically take away that whole site, or can we work on top of it?
No, we can work on top of that. So that will require relocation of the waste, which will be consuming, I know, airspace at the Matilda site, or if it's being chipped upside, and then placement of engineering field at the base.
So we remove the waste that's buried and put it in the pile?
Put it in the pile, yes.
Do we have?
That will be the, this air, but I know, but it will consume airspace from the, from the site. The other option?
The space wasn't bothering me, is the cost of finding all the garbage and moving it, because you can make a big hole there from what I heard in the past. Would that be right, Council Mellon?
Yeah, like, I mean, on your diagram, I don't know, where is that? Whether or not the, the landfill goes like the old site would have went. It could have.
Page 100.
Yeah, you know, there could be, God knows what's there.
Okay, yes, because the approved waste footprint, yes, is this gray line, the dashed line.
I mean, a lot of it, that was used for, I think, a lot of burning, you know, a lot of burn piles and stuff like that, dumping asphalt or, like, you know, that sort of thing. I, I just don't.
We may have to, if you don't have the records, then we might have to find somebody who has some historic knowledge of what happened at that site. That'll be helpful. Better off to know before we go in there and say we're going to do everything, and all of a sudden, the plans are all there, and we got to dig a 50-foot hole just to fill in with engineered material, and then we might look at something different. Just a thought.
Okay. Yeah, we can, you know, the geotechnical assessment could assist with that as well. We could do just a simple test pit program to see if there's even waste there. It's another option, you know, just to see if there's even waste there.
Yeah, well, if you do, you're going to have to do assessment no matter which way we do it, right? So then we'll know.
Yeah.
So anyway, I have thoughts of where I'd go, but I've talked enough. Council Mellon, option A, or one, or two, or A, B, or C, or whatever I go.
Okay, just a quick question on option?
Or if you have questions, go ahead, sorry.
Option two, you have the retaining wall and stairs where you would have to, the people would have to climb up the stairs to throw it in there. Is that what I'm getting from this?
No, 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 no. The stairs is more for the side operator to be able to, instead of walking through the vehicles, just to access the, the facility. And for, yes, if they come and pick up the, the bins, and there is any issues, they can easily access the, the facility from the stairs. It's more for operations, it's not for the residents.
Okay, so between one and two, there's like, there, as far as where somebody bringing garbage in and throwing it into a proper container, they're, they're both basically the same?
No, one is at ground level, so your bin, your bin, you got to throw it in the bin. The other one, you go up to the top, and then you throw it in the bin.
I catch you, okay.
That's why there's more cost. Go up, and you'll throw the garbage over.
Instead of throwing it up?
Correct.
In option one.
I think I have here a photo, just to see. So this is with the retaining wall, and this is a 40 cubic yard bin. So you can see that it's still sticking up a little bit from ground elevation.
Reflective of option one?
No, two.
Option two.
That's option two. The retaining wall is option two.
Yeah, that's why it's more money. Double the money.
I'm not in favor of two B. The power is one thing, and I looked at those compacters, if you will. Yeah, they're going to save us some money as far as, you know, hauling, you know, it's going to pack the garbage into, you know. But when I look at that machine, I, you know, you've got six cylinders, hydraulic cylinders, plus that looks like, you know, modified hide dump from a forage. You know, that just scares me, the maintenance upkeep on two B, on that, what's, like, each unit would have six hydraulic pistons on it, you know. To me, I, I, that just scares me away because of the long-term maintenance of that, whereas the containers are, containers are really, you know. Yes, we're going to save some money by less trips, or, you know, down to the end user, if you will, but I, maybe we can look at that down the road, but I guess, if you will, Mayor Bybels, I would go with option one.
Okay.
Myself, I would definitely go with option one today, but in the back of my head, I would keep the compactor there, just in case eventually we decided that we want to go that way. But I think, I think dollar-wise today, I think option one. If you got to reach up, throw the garbage in, why don't you reach up and throw the garbage in? So I, I'm going to go with option one.
Yes, Mayor.
I actually, I agree with option one. I think the compactor is something that could be explored at a later time. Option two, you know, it, it looks nice and neat, and maybe for accessibility, it's a little easier, but it, the price jump is, in my mind, just not worth it. So I, I would go a simple, simple form of option one.
I only get one vote, right? I would look further in the future and took option two. I know the compactor is certainly something you can dream about someday, but I think it needens it up, you do it right, first time, you're done with it. You can probably always go from, start at option one and go up to option two if you wanted to someday. But I think my biggest concern right now is that we need to find out what's underneath that soil and make sure we can do either option one or option two. If the soils can, got an issue to start with, option one at least gives us somewhere to go, we can probably deal with it. But option two needs weight-bearing capacity, and then you need some stable footings underneath that, and may or may not have that. So then all of a sudden, the price lines up being not twice as much, and it becomes three times as much, and I don't want to do that either, so. I think, to be honest, I think Council needs to see both, at least one option, and at least you got to be comfortable. The bin we have right now, we used to have, how high was it? The bins that, that we were using?
So three, the ones that we use presently, right now, they're a, they have a four-foot wall on them. They're a 20-yard bin, but the, the side walls are, are four feet.
They're not high then?
No.
No, and these would be higher.
These, yeah, I think Jennifer, you said these bins are two point something meters high? Is that correct?
2.4 meters.
Yeah, so that's six feet.
It's plus six, it's almost seven.
Yeah.
It's closer to seven and six. So, and that's my challenge, you, you know, I guess, now I'm going to sound like Council Mellon here, is, you know, if you could get access to, you can go there and push her down with your feet and compact it that way. That's what we do at the farm, right? When we have it on the back of the truck. Doesn't work in this situation, though.
Well.
No, okay, so, so Jennifer, before we go on, are you looking more for a direction, a firm direction, or a direction to go in that's more general?
Uh, we would like a direction to see, for the feasibility, feasibility study, to see whether you're looking at option one or option two. If you're not interested in the compacters right now, that's fine, we can take that off the, the list. Yeah, I, I agree that if there is a concern that there's waste buried under there, we're definitely going to have to do some intrusive work to confirm if it is there, and what the extent is where it is type of thing. I understand, Council needs some time to ruminate on this, and maybe, you know, wants a little bit more information, and that's, that's fine. We'll move at the, on whatever the Council decides.
Okay, so question, if we choose option one, could a future Council say we should have option two and then spend the money to add on, and which would probably be even in today's dollars, you know, probably another 25% on top of the option two price? Would that be a feasible, something to look at, or something that could be done?
Yeah, a, a future Council could come and say, hey, you know what, we, we would prefer to have a raised situation. And I've had other townships who have done that, who have started off with the bins on the floor, and for whatever reason, in the future, they decided that they wanted to build a, build a wall, so to speak. Build the ramp and the, and the retaining wall and so forth. But it's, it's purely what you're interested in, and what will work for your township or municipality. You know, I've been to sites where they've been on the ground, and, you know, and the, the bins are quite high, especially with someone short like me to throw something in there. And the municipalities have provided, or purchased stairs with railings for people who did want to, or have to climb up to throw it in. Now, it doesn't go all the way up, so first it's not going to fall into the bin, but it just gets them a few more feet off the ground to toss the bin in. So that's something else we So that's something else we could look at, if that interests council, you know, if you're concerned about people not being able to throw it into the bin from ground level. Of course, if you're standing in the back of your truck, you could do it.
Okay, fair enough, but then we're going to have the safety concern from, from our side of the fence.
The wheat dirt, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, my, I thinking, you know, we're not, I don't think we're prepared to make an official yes or no on A, one or two, but we will try our best to figure, get a, a site visit of one of them, because we can do that quickly if we have to, if we got the time, even if we have to go individually, doesn't bother me. We don't have to go as a group, we can just say, two of us are going to go to, to guss the landfill site, and we'll, we'll get the, their operating hours, and we'll just go and see it. I don't know, how, do you have any idea, are they elevated, or?
The one that I, that I know is, they've got a couple.
One by mainer is the one I'm thinking about.
Is ground level, I believe, yeah, ground level.
Okay, at least then we can see it.
Yeah.
And if we get the visual and think of, okay, is this good for me, is this good for the residents, the self-done-ask, that you, that would use the landfill? And it's not like everybody uses the landfill, but, you know, those who do use the landfill, it's, it's the quantity, right? It's a pickup truck or a trailer, you know, and, and so we got to make it as, you know, as reasonable as possible. I know, you know, it seems like double the money, but sometimes you spend double the money, and, or you spend half the money, wish, oh, why did I just do it all, want to be done with it? But we need to see it, we, that visual is hard. So I think, you know, if, if, find out if you can find one that's elevated too. I don't know what North Grenville's is.
I believe it's elevated, North Grenville.
Okay. We'll look at a couple within the next week or two, and then we can have, when we have a regular council meeting, we can just make that decision and go on. And what Council Mellon and myself and some others will do was give you a, a rough guesstimate of what is there.
Okay.
And you still got to do geotech work, I understand that, but if someone gives you an, unless, if someone says, no, it's a clean site, we're good to go, at least we have an idea, it's not as bad. If someone says it's been a cut and fill and paste thing, which is what they did, then we might have to see if that's a still workable option for that ground. Yes, Jeff?
So just add a little context through this, Mr. Mayor, when you, when you're referring to bin heights, the, the two bins that we have presently on our landfill site, it's challenging for people to.
Well.
Throw them over, and they're a low-wall bin.
Yeah.
And we're, you're proposing a higher wall bin, that's going to be a, that's going to be like a potato sack type throw with a pitchfork to get it over the side. That's all I'm.
And, and that's my concern. I think, I don't, I think we'd be short-sighted just saying level one today without looking, so.
Well, I'd like to get some more information.
Okay, so we'll do that as soon as practically possible. We may not do it as a council, we may say, you know, those two go on their own, or we go individually, I don't care. We, we'll get the CEO, give us some options, and if you know some options that are local here, that we can go pick, get a visual of the two, then it's a quick decision, like, you know, well, you know, I know it's a ton of money, but we got to give you some direction to go somehow, and I know it's not going to be done tomorrow, but we got to get the plans in place this year, so we, this council has set, has dealt with the landfills to the best of our ability, instead of saying, well, we can just let the rest of it go, so.
Perfect.
Questions, comments?
Sounds like a plan.
Makes sense.
Go ahead.
On option two, there's a five-degree, or 5% grade elevation to get to the waste side. On the, on the recycle site, are those at?
They're still at ground level.
At ground.
Well, we got to throw, you got to throw up into the same-sized container for the scrap metals and.
Yep, correct.
Pretty much what they're doing right now at the site, they have some areas where they're picking up the materials.
We don't have, take, we don't take a lot of recyclable material that are landfill, usually just gets landfilled.
Now, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have the option with the recyclables, that we could open up the back doors, so that they can access it via that way, and then when the load's getting three-quarters full, then we close the doors up on the bins, open them up each morning type of deal. That is an option with ground level for the recyclables.
Could we not do that with the waste too? Of course, they'd have to go around.
Well, they're backed up against the walls.
I, I was under the impression that we weren't, you know, of our seniors are going to use this, and they got to throw it seven feet high?
Yeah.
Let me just, all the other thing you can do is you can mix, so you put ways, four, four of waste bins, and then four recyclable bins, and then as they get full, you just replace them.
Yeah, you can have them all at elevation, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I know, but then we're.
That's a lot of bins, I don't know if we take in that much garbage in a week or not, but.
Damn, you know.
Based on the numbers, yes.
Well, yeah, but there's other options too, I got, anyway.
Yes, diversion limitation in, in the amount of bags that they can dispose at the site, so.
Yeah. Okay, let's go check out some of them, and then we know where we're going. I think that's the best.
Sounds great.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thanks Jennifer and Christina for now. Sorry you couldn't give me the answer today, but.
Okay.
We need, we need to do the investigation, we're a visual councillor, and Council Wells not here, and, and I'm sure he'd like to put his input on this one too, so.
Sure, no problem, no problem, I'm a visual person too, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll get back to you as soon as practically possible.
Thank you, ladies.
Hey, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There. Okay, so that's the end of our staff reports. We need to move into closed session, so please do so. And with, with that, to the audience, there'll be just adjournment after that, so we'll go into closed and go on from there. Go ahead.
Moved by Councillor Lewis, seconded by Councillor Mellon, the council proceed in camera at 1:03 PM pursuant to section 239 to B of the Municipal Act 2001. More specifically, personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All heard, motion goes in favor. Any motion carries? And with that, I'd like to thank staff for their work this morning, including the ones that aren't here anymore, and thank council, and thank the audience for participating.